Call the work session to order. First thing would be the home occupation regulations. Gosh. I feel like I just said it before.
It's been awhile, hasn't it?
Hasn't it?
We've, um, we've had a request to add this to the, the work session item tonight. We had a gentleman that was interested in opening a home occupation on his property. He runs a, I believe it was a fur trapping business, as a side business. Um, and he was asking basically to run an office out of his house, which is what we typically permit home occupations for. Um, then he mentioned he'd be, um, installing a rather large animal incinerator outside. And that kind of raised a red flag. Uh, unfortunately with the way our current home occupation regulations are worded, we had to deny his request. Um, and then Mr. Johnson, I believe you, you asked us to, um, to take a look at this, so this is before you this evening. Um, and staff started looking at our home occupation regulations and comparing them to other localities and realized we're, we're pretty strict with how we, we permit these, so. I guess we could have a, a brief discussion on maybe the direction the board wants to go with this.
Well, the issue, um, I, I didn't realize, um, that, um, we were gonna look at this as a home occupation, it was the idea that he wants an incinerator and, uh, incinerators are fine and dandy if you're using them on a farm, but if you're actually bringing animals off-site, um, from veterinary offices and things of that sort, then, um, that, I guess, turns it into a business and so brings up this, this issue, um.
Yeah, there, one, one of the parts of this that, that caught my eye was the, some reference, I, I didn't know the, I didn't know the background in terms of the incinerator, but refers to no mechanical equipment, not normally in a residence or some such language and that. And it, it, it gave me pause to think about that, that, boy, that's a, that's a sticky wicket, because if somebody wants to, in the example I thought of, you know, make firewood, are we not gonna allow them to have a log splitter? Cause that, you don't normally have a log splitter in your living room. However, if it goes as far as a commercial scale incinerator, let me exaggerate a little bit. How do you, how do you draw those lines to, to define what's, what'll work and what wasn't, what worked in terms of a neighborhood?
And I kind of, I kind of ran down there, but I mean, the point is, this is a, um, I, I don't know. It's like picking a little thing on a sweater and the next thing you know, you got a whole, whole pile of yarn around your head and all you wanted to do was just get rid of this little, this little pole. I mean, he's not, this is, first of all, this is not a huge piece of equip, this is not like a massive thing, this is a, this is a small, uh, thing that I think, to get a large animal in it, he's gonna have to do some surgery first, he's gonna have to quarter it.
Which is not unusual, that, I mean.
This is not something you can like drop a whole horse into or something of that nature. Uh, and, and this is, uh, this is, this is a really, a technical thing, cause you can have a, you can have a thousand cows, you can incinerate a thousand cows on your farm and that's fine.
In an open pit.
But if you bring a guinea pig from a, from a, from a vet's office and charge the vet fifty bucks, then suddenly we can't do that. So, I'm not articulating very well, but, I mean, there's gotta be a, I would think, some kind of sensible way that we could allow this type of use, which is not gonna create traffic, I mean, he's not gonna, it's not gonna be a drive-through incinerator where people are gonna be coming there and throwing their pets out. He, he's gonna go to, to vets' offices, and of course, he also is a varmint, uh, remover, so, instead of burying a bunch of possums and skunks and whatnot, he's, he will just incinerate them. And of course, the amount of ash is, is almost nothing, I mean.
Well, the other thing about that example is, we, we allow people to burn their trash in barrels sitting out in their backyard, and if you ever experience those, you know, this, this incinerator probably is.
Well, this incinerator has to pass DEQ, has to.
Well, that's where I'm going.
So, it's not any, uh, nobody, I, I doubt if his neighbors will even know that it's there.
The, the, the other thing that ran across my mind, I, I think it's only in Ag, maybe you know Josh, we permit things like garages, automobile repair shops in Ag, uh, and they certainly have equipment that's not customary to be in a, in a residence, and so, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the conversation about this, but, you know, when you get to things, when you get to the definitions that, that you have to try to explain to people, uh, it, it's pretty tricky. I, I agree, this definition's not, not wonderful as it stands. And so, if, if the planning commission wants to wrestle with this, probably okay, but I think it's one that, that, that a great deal of precision and, and thought is gonna have to go into it. And it also begs the question, are the definitions and permitted uses the same in Ag as in R1 versus R2 versus R4? Uh, I'm not so sure that they would be the same, uh, because you've got different situations, uh, in, in terms of size of the parcels and everything else. And neighborhoods and so forth, so, it, it, this is a, with a little bit of reflection, I came to the, to the thought that this is a much more complicated, you know, attempt than one might, might think, for lots of reasons. That doesn't mean we shouldn't go down the path, but, uh.
What is more complicated, the, the, uh, the home, uh, home occupation?
The definition or the allowability of what, what is and what isn't allowed or defined as a home occupation?
But redefining that is not the only way that we could arrange for an incinerator to be.
The, the incinerator, I wouldn't even, I, I think if, I still don't think it would be a home occupation either way, so I think that's just a text amendment to add a, a use.
As a use, yeah.
But we have the bigger problem, the home business thing, the home occupation comes along all the time. I, we constantly have questions on what's a valid home occupation and what's not a valid home occupation, which is, which is a recurring problem here, is defining what is valid home occupations.
And it could be argued that a lot of people, their stove in their kitchen is an incinerator.
And you're bringing in animals from the grocery store.
Exactly. It's, it's.
Yeah, I'd incinerate, I'd, I'd incinerate cows, once taking a hive on my deck.
Exactly, you know, uh.
Do you realize how the judges do that? The test is, if, if the judge smiles, you're in trouble. If you make an argument and the judge smiles, you're, you're losing.
Well, you say it comes up all the time, what, where, where, given the language that we have today, where, where are the problems that you, you collectively see with it, with this language?
This is the first time this has been a problem since I've been here, but it, it kind of raises to light some of the, the inflexibility that's built into it.
But, but I, I'm gonna, I'm just saying, this is not what this is about though, this is not about redefining a home occupation. This is about a particular piece of equipment that right now is not apparently allowed in the agricultural zone unless you are using it only for animals generated. So, all we need to do to allow this is to do, as Tom said, a text amendment. We don't need to redefine what a home occupation is. This really is not this man's occupation, it's, it's a little, it's basically a tool that he uses in his occupation that he's already doing.
And I guess the question that I have then, is, do we, are we also, are you, somebody also proposing that we revisit this, this definition? I think that's, that was my take on it, that, that it's both, that they're not connected, but it's.
Well, I ask then, I mean, if, if I understand Josh, I ask that we consider this, this consideration, and, and this is what got put on the agenda, which is not really, is not really connected with what I asked for.
There might've been some miscommunication, this was never a matter of use, it was always from the get-go a home occupation, um, the applicant, he may, he might've been misunderstanding, but.
No, I, okay, Tom, is there a misunderstanding, cause that's certainly not my understanding.
Well, I, no, I think, I think when Josh was looking at the incinerator, he was looking, could we squeeze it in under a home occupation exception? And that's what kind of in, incorporated the home occupation discussion, because when all else fails, that's what we try and figure out. Cause typically, we try and allow people to do things, and so when all else fails, usually what we do is, well, can we shoehorn this in as a home occupation? So, I think that's what happened, is on Josh's end, he was trying to figure out, can we shoehorn this, and that's sort of where it went to the home occupation discussion. Which, and maybe Josh hasn't had any since he's been here, but I know Greg and I had like, one of the questions was a guy wanted to do some repair of a few lawnmowers in his garage. And, and was that a valid home occupation under this definition or not? So, we've, we've had some situations, another guy wanted to repair people's boats, and so, those kinds of discussions come up regularly. Josh and I were discussing today, Apple computers started in a garage, but soldering irons aren't normally the kind of thing you find in a house, so, you know, would, would it be illegal to, most people don't have a soldering iron, you might, but most people don't have a soldering iron. And so Josh and I were discussing today, you know, would assembling some computers in your garage be a violation of home occupation? So, that, it kind of morphed into a, a greater discussion based on, could we shoehorn that incinerator? So, we, we may need to separate the issues again, but the home occupation is an issue. Because it's, it's gonna come back again, every time we're trying to figure out to allow somebody, the first thing we look at, well, can we do it as a home occupation?
Well, I don't, I have no problem with, with, with looking at this if this is a problem. But I don't think that's the problem in this case, because this is not, he's not setting up, this is basically simply a part of his business that he's, that he's already doing. Because he, he, he traps, uh, problem animals on people's farms or houses or whatever, I mean, he goes in and cleans out rats or bats or whatever, and he euthanizes and brings them back and, and at this point is burying them.
We could add it as a permitted use under, after cemeteries and graveyards.
So, all this really does is just allow someone to have one of these and, and use it in an agricultural zone. And I would, I would bet the, the pollution is less than your average tractor, probably, I mean.
Certainly your average.
And it's much quieter.
Burn can.
Yeah, definitely.
The, I, I guess, help me understand why we did, why we didn't find a place to fit this, is, is there, is there language somewhere other than this home occupation language? The fact that it's not listed as a permitted use, is that what we're hanging our hat on?
Yes.
It's either gonna be a permitted use or accessory to one of those permitted uses, and he doesn't have a farm, so we can't claim he's an accessory used to a farm, so we have to eliminate that. And then, we're left with what else we have, and we just, it couldn't be categorized.
But is it not an accessory to a home occupation? Is that what?
Home occupations are accessory uses, so we would have an accessory to an accessory, which is not permitted.
The, the home occupation is accessory to the residential use.
I understand, but I'm not sure.
Well, it's not residential, it's agricultural. I mean, he has, he, this is not somebody in a subdivision, he's got a pretty good sized piece of land there, I don't know just how many it is, but.
It was hard to buy the idea that it's incidental to a dwelling unit, I mean, running a home office is incidental to your house, saying I'm incinerating animals outside.
Well, and, and that might be the part of the def, one of the parts of the definition of, I'm now back to this home occupation, that needs to be revisited. You know, forcing it to be incidental to a residence may not be the right approach at all.
Well, and we had the discussion, Josh and I, whether we wanna maybe make it a, a traffic limitation, uh, an employee limitation, whether, whether those types of residential restrictions as opposed to this, where we say you can't have more than one employee, or you can't have more than X number of car, you know, we talked about that today as a possible alternative scenario.
And I think it might also vary, whether it's large lot Ags versus an R3. I think, I think there has to be a distinction, you know, somehow that, that factors that in.
Yeah, I, I, and that's why I'm, I'm very uncomfortable about talking about this, because this is not, it, it, no one's suggesting that in R1, 2, or 3, you should have incinerators.
Or maybe most other occupations.
Well, you get into bookkeepers and, and piano teachers and, you know, so it's, yeah.
Is there a, a way to distinguish between a home base, which is incidental to the property, and then something that's a little bit more intensive, which would be an enterprise? That is, such as an incinerator and those, those type of things, and distinguish between those that are interior to the, to the premises, and then those that may involve exterior.
That was gonna be my suggestion, Spatsy has home enterprises, which they only permit in their Ag zones, they're basically glorified, more intensive home occupations, so you can actually tell. The difference is, you can look at it and see from the outside that it's used for a business, but it's still a house, it's just more intensive home occupation. And that was, that was gonna be my recommendation on how to rectify this, cause we do have a lot of more intensive home occupations in our Ag zones that probably aren't appropriate for R1, 2, 3, or 4, but that would be appropriate for, you know, larger lots and Ags, so that was gonna be my ultimate recommendation out of this, is that we pursue a home, home enterprise type use.
Well, that would be like these little portable sawmills, I, I don't think we want one sitting in green fields, but everyone's farm, I, I don't see an issue, because I know they're out there.
Absolutely, lots of them.
Yeah.
Or, you know, the, the guy's kids and his buddies split firewood on the weekend and sell it, you know. Not sure we wanna get in the way of that either.
Here again, this is, this is not a, you know, this, home occupation goes into, you're gonna have a sign, well, he's not gonna have a sign up, you know.
Right, right, yeah, I think, two different.
This is, this is purely a, well, I'm trying to keep it onto this, because this is, this is an existing prob.
True.
This other thing could, this other thing could be, is a can that could be kicked down the road.
But if you go with Josh's solution of this home enterprise, then you solve the lawnmower repair guy who's got ten acres and wants to repair some mowers, you solve the, the little portable sawmill, you solve.
Well, I think we need to look at that, but we, we don't have it here to look at at the moment.
This would be, just, you'd be authorizing the planning commission to go ahead and pursue that idea, and like Tom said, this does either address one very specific problem with the incinerator guy, or you address a whole range of issues that would encompass his. So, whenever we try to, we try to address these problems in, in greater magnitude when we can.
All right, well, I think, I think what I'm gathering from everybody is, we need a text amendment now to solve the initial problem, and then let's look at the, the overall scope of it, so that we can encompass that and get rid of the need to have the text amendment. Would that kind of sum it up?
I, I think you, you did an apt job of summing it up, yes. But even if we get the, I, I'm asking Josh a question now. We have, we already have a, a, uh, home occupation paragraph that defines what home occupation is. We also already have certain things that are allowed in certain zones, so I don't see how just simply cleaning up the home occupation is gonna magically make, that there's gonna, it's still gonna have to be a list of things that are permitted.
What you'll run into.
I mean, you could have, you could have, excuse me, you could have a home occupation where you, you, uh, you know, work on, on airplanes, but that doesn't mean you can land an airplane there, so I mean, there's, there are things that are, that are, you, you still need, you still need a list of things that are allowed, and it seems to me if all you do is change the home occupation, I'm not sure that you really address the issue of this incinerator.
The, the other option here too, is to add some flexibility to what this is and give the zoning administrator some discretion in what mechanical equipment's allowed. That would be the easiest way to address this, the problem, I shouldn't say the problem, the reason we didn't address this as a use is cause as soon as you add, for lack of a better term, animal incinerator as a use in Ag zoning, you can allow that as a principal use on every property. So, ninety-four percent of the county, no house, you can just put up an incinerator as a principal use on the property. That's why we didn't address it as a use matter, it's more of a accessory to dwelling.
Well, the other thing, let me ask a question, that, that.
And what would the problem be with that? I mean, granted, why would people, I mean, I don't think there's gonna be a rush for people to go out and buy, I don't know how much incinerators cost, but I don't think they're cheap, I mean.
Because in the planning world, they want a house there before you do anything else. That's the problem. I don't agree with it, but that's in the planning world, they want a primary structure, and everything else has to be secondary to that. That's what it comes down to.
But, I mean, most of, most of, most of the land, I think, would, if I understood Josh correctly, he's just saying that everyone who owns agricultural property could have an incinerator.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's not good or bad.
I'm not, I don't know why that's a problem. I mean, the point is, they're really not a problem, I mean, they're, they're, you know, and if, if, they, they have to meet DEQ standards and probably EPA standards, I don't know, but I'm, I'm sure they're very tightly regulated.
Very tightly regulated, no.
And given their nature, I suspect you go on a list somewhere that you've got.
And you get inspected on a regular, there's a whole lot, because, uh.
And anybody who's got ten cows can have one already. Maybe the incinerator salesman should also sell cattle to go with it.
Old cows.
Now, I, I have several pieces of Ag property, but I really don't want an incinerator.
You don't want an incinerator, yeah.
I have cattle and I don't want an incinerator.
I use tea.
No matter how bad all they are, you load them on the truck and take them to market, right?
Well, I, I used to bury them, but now I take them to the landfill.
Yeah.
I think we'd rather you incinerate them.
I can't, I can't, and I'm not allowed to have one.
Yeah, you can, you can have one, this is it, you can have one.
I can dig a hole in him.
A lot quicker, yeah.
But, I, I mean, it, this, without making this, you know, make, to, to trivializing it too much, but it, 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 it sounds odd, because I don't think we regulate these outdoor furnace, wood burning furnaces that people's use to heat their homes and things like that, and that's probably a, a larger, more intense impact, and on and on and on.
And you could probably incinerate, uh, small animals in those quite effectively.
I, I would say, and so, I, I'm, I don't like the idea of listing it.
But that's the kind of ordinance we have.
I know, that, well, we have an inclusion versus exclusionary ordinance, which I have always had trouble with, but, uh, I, I'd, I'd much rather list things that we don't want and allow some discretion with.
Then we have to think of every obnoxious thing possible.
No, we add to it when we want to, just like we add to it now. I mean, it's the same game, that's the crazy thing about it, but, uh.
All right, well.
I'm, I'm hesitant to turn this over to the planning commission without something a little bit more in the way of guidance, unless we won't allow them to do what we've been doing for the last twenty minutes, which may not be bad, I'm not.
Well, that's what I was gonna say though, I think what Josh is saying, if he isn't, I'll say it, I think we should have two home occupation definitions. Well, or more, but at least one that we say in Ag zoning, and maybe have some acreage limitations, say of X acres or more, then you have to maybe go with this home enterprise that he's recommending, which is gonna be much broader and allow, I mean, I think that the home enterprise would add some language which would cover this incinerator, that's something to affect if, or any normal or customary use on Ag property. You know, could, is a valid home enterprise business in an Ag zoning. And then you have a, a separate home occupation definition for the residential zoning, and then what that does is it, we don't, people don't have to come back every time they have something that they wanna add back to the list, because we gotta.
I have a question, since, since the state decided that you have a farm, you can virtually have any kind of business that you need, what, what do we define as being large enough to be considered an actual farm? And then, it doesn't really matter what we think, because, hey, you can have anything according to the state.
State definition does require it to be a bona fide farm that's producing farm products, or they do have a definition of, of, and I don't remember the exact wording, but the word bona fide is in there, that it has to be a real farm, that you really are doing some sort of farming.
Is that a good tree farming?
Uh, well, that's an interesting one, and, and it does in some cases. Again, if that's your business, if you're in the tree farming business.
Yeah, the, I said three when you said two, because it seems to me there's, there's the home occupation that's, you know, in an office, in the house, the outside world knows nothing of it. And it could be tax, doing tax work or accounting or these kind of things. Then there's one that's a little bit more visible, where, you know, there might be a sign or something else sitting out in the backyard. And then there's a third type, which is, and we have a lot of these, these, we have, uh, garages where people are repairing automobiles, they're repairing chainsaws, they're boats, whatever, maybe to include incinerators and things like that, and so it's, there, there's, there are tiers that exist right now that we probably need to acknowledge.
A lot of tiers.
Yeah, yeah, right, no, no.
We, I can remember in the dim past when we first came up with this home occupation, because we didn't have this twenty years ago, there was no home occupation. Uh, it was, it tried to, it, it tried to say you could have X number of employees, or you could have, you know, and that's really, I mean, the problem with that is, it's very, particularly when you start talking about customers, you know, how in the world do you police that?
It's urban zoning as well, that is.
It, it just, it's just very difficult to make it work, so I think if you're, if you're gonna start doing different, different levels, I was gonna say tiers, different levels, I don't, I don't know if three's enough, because
Yeah, well.
You've got garages where, um, you know, the guy works on maybe two cars a day, and then you've got garages where you've got a steady stream of cars coming in and out.
Well, one of the things you can.
And they got an inspection license and blah, blah, blah.
One of the things you can do is, for example, if you had the home enterprise, you make that as of right in an Ag zoning and an SUP, and maybe with some of the other zoning districts. And so you can, you could actually have, whereas it's as of right in some districts, SUP in other districts, depending on how much review you want of, of the business that's going to be going there.
Well, or you could, I mean, some of them could be by right even in the Rs, you know, if somebody doing tax preparation, we're at their kitchen table, I mean, I don't care.
Well, exactly, if there's no customers, if, if there's no customers and no traffic, then there's nothing to be worried about. Where the customers come in and, and all of that is when all of a coup, you're running traffic through a residential area.
Well, and I think that's, I think that's headed down the right path, if we can start talking about impacts as opposed to trying to list all the things we could, can or can't think of in terms of, mechanical equipment and devices and signs and, and these kind of things, that we can start trying to figure out, what are we, what are we concerned about with respect to impacts? Traffic, maybe signs.
Trips per day.
Trips per day, number of employees, parking for, I mean, I don't know what the list of impacts looks like, but I think that would be a better path potentially. Combined with maybe identifying, and, and Mark might be right, it might be more than three, but sort of somehow characterizing different types of home occupations from essentially no impact to potentially significant impact. And, and try to get at it that way.
But, here again.
Doesn't solve it.
This is not a home occupation. This is a piece of equipment that this man wants and wants to use, but it's not a home occupation. In, in, based on what we're talking about, it, the impacts of this, from what we're talking about, would be virtually nothing.
Maybe positive, as compared to burying.
Well, yeah, it, yeah.
Groundwater and, and, so.
Just to be fair, when he, when he came to us, the applicant, he said, I'd like to use my home, as basically, he used the term home base for my fur trapping business, that was what he said to us immediately. So, I said, yeah, that'd be a home occupation, no problem. Said, oh, by the way, I'm also gonna be burning animals and, and incinerators, so I said. So, that's why I said it was always gonna be a home occupation, cause he said that was gonna be his, basically his office.
I think he's been doing that for ten, fifteen years.
He also told us that.
Yeah, the, the, the other part of it, but, I mean, and, but I, to me, that's really agricultural, I mean, I, I realize that's stretching things out, but it's, it's not, it has to do with animals and it's not, uh.
Well, he's producing a product presumably, he's producing those furs, among other things.
Well, yeah, yeah. That's right, that makes it a farm.
We could do it under smokehouse.
I saw that.
Yeah, just the fact that he turns the setting way up, it's not our problem.
So, they keep damaging the food products.
In, in fairness to the, to this person that has asked the, the question, is this something that needs to be dealt with, um, more quickly than turning this over to the planning commission and letting them do this for a couple of months?
I would really appreciate it if, as, 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 uh, Teal said, if we could do a text amendment that, that would allow this man to get on, because he, at first, and I'm not trying to give anybody any trouble, but at first planning and zoning said that it was not a problem, and then after they looked at it more, it, it did become a problem, so, and he'd already ordered the machine, uh, you know.
Okay, so there is some time sensitivity, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I'll take the blame for that. They, they told him yes, and then they asked me, and I said, you know.
Well, I mean, it's not, I don't, I don't think there's any blame here, because ultimately, I think, I think your answer was right, um, it's just sometimes the law's full, you know.
Well, it just directs us.
In this case, the law needs to be tweaked a little bit.
Right.
Uh, not lawyer, law.
No, lawyers need to be tweaked too.
Yeah.
Well, it's the whole thing, is if there's, if someone tells you there's a problem, you can't fix it.
Right, exactly.
Well, I guess the question is, is there, is there a way that we can accommodate his specific need now, it it's sort of a special use kind of a concept, uh, while the rest of this proceeds, and and, I mean, I'm I'm hesitant to do, to just add something to a list, I mean, I, and that may be the simplest answer, I I I just.
Is there a way to put a sunset on this?
Well, the reality is, it's gonna take, you still gotta go to the planning commission, advertise, come here, advertise. So what if we draw a very, very simple initial home enterprise definition that catches him, and then realize we're gonna tweak it later? Make a narrow home enterprise definition that we're gonna work on later and and add him under that so that it works for him, maybe use some language. A a home enterprise is any any business in an agricultural zone that's ancillary to the use of, that's ancillary to a home that involves ac- activities are typical in an agricultural property, boom, we've caught him, and anything else that would be, you know.
Well, you could also think of it in terms of of ag, sort of the life cycle of an animal.
And and so you could create a.
Ag is the entire life cycle of an animal, including the, you know.
So we could create a very narrow home enterprise definition to start with, that just says typical ag stuff, we allow an ag if it's home-based, and and then um the very layman's version of it.
It's good that we allow ag stuff in agriculture, that's.
Well, I love it, do you know the, what the first list permitted use under agriculture is?
Farming?
Agriculture.
Agriculture.
No kidding, the very first word is agriculture.
I guess I keep coming back, and maybe this is just a blind spot for me, but you you could have it, you can have a, you're still gonna need that list ultimately, to to to, for certain uh, certain types of activity. And it seems to me that an incinerator, and and the reason why I think this should be a slam dunk is because farms can have, so obviously, they're not something that are that are, that cause great disruption to the, I think, I think according to Steve, there's sixteen of them on farms across Orange County.
So hi- his is not technically a farm?
I don't have a technical license.
That's my, I guess that's my question.
That was.
Yeah, it's not, it's not technically a farm, but that's what I'm saying, if we, if we, if we create a definition of a a agricultural-based home or agricultural-based home business that says anything that would be typically done in an agricultural property can be ancillary to your house, that's gonna get incinerators, pro- you know, anything of.
But but he's not, he's not, here, here we come back here, we're talking about his house, he's not gonna do this in his house. I mean, the man's got, I don't know how much land he's got, but he's got a decent amount of acreage.
But we don't say it has to be in the house, we're saying if the, it's a home-based business, we eliminate the like requirement that it be in done inside the house, but that the base of operation is the house, as opposed to a separate store or business storefront, that's what we're talking about. There's no se- when we're talking about a home-based business, if the home is the main facility, the fact we can fix it so we can have an inc- an incinerator out back and still be a home-based business, 'cause the the operation of the business is happening from a home. As opposed to a standalone business facility, I don't know if that makes sense.
That's where you write the bills.
Writing answers to phone calls and things is just dual purposing the house, because, you know, not to get down the the IRS, but you are able to declare a part of your house as a, as an office for business expenses, um, and and you can dual, dual-use your house. This is gonna accommodate, you know, storm energy repair, farm equipment repair, um.
I guess I don't understand why we would say that property that's zoned agricultural, as Jim's already brought out, it says that agriculture is allowed. And Tom, the the definition that you were talking about is anything that's commonly used with agriculture.
Yeah, I'm beginning to think we don't need to do anything.
And we seem to be getting wheels inside of wheels.
No, I didn't, I obviously didn't do a very good job of explaining, so let me try it again.
Maybe I didn't do a good job of hearing.
If you have a bona fide farm, the general assembly said we can't limit you hardly at all. So if you got a bona fide farm, you can have a vegetable stand, we can't stop you. If you've got a bona fide farm, you can have an incinerator, and that's all, you have a right to all these things. If you don't have a bona fide farm, the fact that you have an agricultural zoning doesn't let you do all those things. So if you got a bona fide farm, you're exempted from all of these regulations that we have, what I'm saying is that we say, as long as it's home-based, you have the same rights as a bona fide farm would have.
But how do you define bona fide farm?
Does the state define that?
The state, the state has a definition, I don't have a computer in front of me, the state has a defin- and bona fide is what they use, that's their word. Bonafide agricultural production, I think, is what they use.
Does he harvest any of the animals from his property?
Oh, I'm sure he does.
I think it'd be, because you you gotta be bona fide to be eligible for land use, which is a minimum of five acres, and you have to produce
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars, is it still a thousand?
I think so.
Thousand dollars of of revenue a year.
So if he sells a thousand dollars worth of furs or mountings or whatever.
And you're allowed to, when you own a farm, I think you're allowed, you don't have to raise all of your beef from little baby beefs, you're you're allowed to go to the stock market and buy some and bring them onto your property. So that's really no different than 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 going out and trapping a possum over at Jim Crozier's place and bringing it back to your place and and displacing it from its fur. I don't think possum fur is a real biggie, but.
Things we all agree you should be able to do it, we're just trying to figure out the best vehicle to get there.
No, absolutely.
A gator.
Is whether he's doing the incinerator to support his operations, or he's doing it for a fee as a business, to transact a business with then, with people that have done, you know, that are.
So if a farmer who's, Bill, Bill Farmer, who who has ten thousand head of cattle, and makes two hundred thousand dollars a year, and, you know, which all farmers are rich, we know that, um, i- i- if if he, if he strikes up a bargain with with a local veterinarian to to take all of their their dogs and cats that have been euthanized, is is he suddenly, is, he does that for a fee, is he suddenly outside the?
No, I don't, I think he's okay, because the general assembly is taking our rights away, because he, he has a right, incinerating is a normal ancillary part of running a farm, and since he's running a farm, his incinerator is, we can't regulate it, 'cause it's a normal ancillary part of running his farm.
Well, I I I think, I'm I'm beginning to see the the light at the end of the tunnel, I just hope it's not a freight train. I- i- it seems to me that Orange County needs to think about how it defines agriculture and how it looks at that, I'm not sure that, that i- if someone's got forty acres and it's zoned agricultural, then as far as I'm concerned, they've got a farm. Insisting they go out and build a pigpen and put some piglets in there and and have a few ducks and geese, to me, is is just a ridiculous distinction that we're drawing. So I I would, I would, what I would, what I would agree with is that you know, you have some minimum, I think bona fide farms, there has to be a minimum acreage, is that correct?
I think, yeah, I think it's five.
Okay, so I can, I can see, you know, requiring that, but it just, to me, I can't see how how we benefit, anything you can do on a farm, if you're doing other farmy stuff, but no, you can't do it if if you're not doing that stuff. I, other than the minimum acreage, 'cause then that keeps, you know, two-acre lot subdivision from having a bunch of the stuff going on.
I mean, I know people that hang a shingle out in front of their house that says A and B farm. They have a couple of dogs and a cat.
Mm-hmm.
But they have a farm. So I don't see an issue with them incinerating anyway, because we're not gonna have near the control the state has over it. State's gonna regulate how he uses it and I don't know.
What, I think what Josh and I are hearing is, let's get this incinerator approved as quick as possible, can we just, we'll go to, we'll do it with the planning commission the quickest and most efficiently.
I'm willing to spend debate at that point.
I will say, this is, I think I mentioned, you know, I don't like to recycle code from other localities, 'cause Orange is very unique, but this is one of these areas that a lot of the counties have mastered this concept, they've been around there, they've done this, so this would actually be a really easy, I think, amendment to pursue.
And I I get what you're saying, but mastering the concept so often has led to overregulation, and that is a real concern in this county. So that's my only concern with going with mastering the process. Uh, we we start walking over the cliff like the rest of the lemons.
But remember, we're prompted, this Josh is trying to expand what you can do.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
And and I appreciate that, I mean, I I did notice when he said we're more restrictive than most counties, I picked up on that.
I I think I got my marching orders.
We'll, we'll work on it. Interesting, there's some language here that says, no county shall adopt an ordinance that requires special exception for for production uh in any area that's zoned agriculture.
It's zoned agriculture?
It says, that is zoned as an agriculture district or classification, quote unquote.
That's very interesting, that's in the state code.
But it's for production.
Well, that's where, I can't read all that, this is, this is the uh
He is producing.
State's right farm statutes from the state of Virginia.
He sells furs.
Code three point two dash three thou- three hundred.
Raccoons and beavers.
Yeah, I mean, so.
I'm sorry, Jim, that was what?
It it's Virginia code three point two dash three hundred.
Three point two dash three hundred.
Yeah. So right to farm statute for the state of Virginia.
Dash two hundred or three hundred?
I'm sorry, three hundred.
Three hundred.
And I, and I read that under three point two dash three oh one. I got curious after we started talking, and it used the term bona fide.
Yeah, and see, the the production has a definition. Means the bona fide production or harvesting of agriculture or silviculture products, but shall not include the processing of agricultural, silviculture products on or the above-ground application or storage of sewage sludge. So they they narrowly define that it's, that it's actual bona fide production of agricultural products. That's the difference.
That's the bona fide they're talking about.
Right, that's the bona fide that they're talking about.
Infer to, fur is not, is not considered the.
That'd be a hard sell, well, if for one.
It says animals, how, I mean, I I don't understand.
But he's not, he's not produce, producing animals is agricultural production. Producing fur from something you're bringing in off-site, how's that any different than making a jacket or a sweater? You know, you're you're actually not raising animals, producing animals.
A lot different for the animal.
Well. But it, but the end of the day, you're.
Alright, look, listen.
I'm sorry.
Since we can't. Since we can't burn it, let's talk about proposed trade.
Yeah. It's interesting that these ended up on the same uh agenda.
Yeah, I'm already, I'm already there.
I thought that was a great segue.
This must have been planned.
And he did it, but then he didn't show up for the party.
I made some changes as per.
Hey, that's, that's art, that's art and agriculture both.
I made some changes as per our last discussion, and I, and I wanna make a disclaimer right up front, I'm not I'm not trying to sell this to you, if you don't want it, I'm perfectly content if you don't want it, it was just a tool that was provided if the county does want this tool, and so what I did is I added some language visible from the road or adjoining lot line, we were saying, you know, if somebody's in the twenty acres and it's in the middle, who cares? So I added some language in it, and and as Mr. White was was asking, what's the definition, so I actually added trash, garbage, refuse, litter definition to be those items accepted for disposal at the Orange County landfill, and they have a list on their website of what they accept.
The only question I have with that list is, construction debris, is that, do we mean to include that or exclude that from this ordinance? I- i- is a question for us to to decide.
Well, and it's in, and and construction debris, I think, is different from people that are accumulating bricks to be used, reused, or used later, I mean, some people use sites for debris dumps, which I do think should be caught here.
Absolutely.
That becomes a landfill.
Well, the landfill will take it, I mean, they'll take construction debris.
Right.
Uh, I I just, i- in thinking through it, I was, I could sort of check off all the things I could imagine, except when I got to that, to construction debris, I had a little bit of a question mark, I I I think it should be included.
Well, it is included here right now.
Right.
Because we do accept it there, and therefore, because it's accepted there, we, it's included in this definition. And again, I did these for discussion purposes, just to, I kinda, that's what I sensed were the two concerns last time around.
Yeah, I'm I'm much more comfortable with the visible from the road, but yeah, I I really don't care if all this crap's in the middle of somebody's property, and that's, then get you deal with, but.
Back when Mr. Goodwin was talking about the road, I'm wondering whether that road is a private road or a public road?
Well, I said road or any adjoining lot, so probably if they can stand on the private road and see if they can stand on the adjoining lot that's right next to them, see, and I kinda didn't separate that, 'cause I assume if you can see it from the private road, you can see it from the adjoining lot there, too.
And of course, public road, that would help somebody that lives across the street, even though they're not adjoining, it's visible.
And and we can't, I mean, by by the US Constitution, we can't just go onto somebody's property and search for things, so all this really does is codify what's the constitutional limitation anyway.
And I, I think we're, we're, I I hope, but I think we're getting closer to narrowing this to if it's, if it's a pile of stuff that someone should have taken or should be taking to the landfill, we want to encourage them to take it to the landfill. That's really the, sort of, in layman's terms, the narrow interpretation that I think we're looking for.
And that's the goal.
And this board has had, um, I've kind of worked with individuals to try to get debris taken to the landfill. Remember, and and trying to set up payment plans to get 'cause that's the ultimate place we're at almost there.
Well, that, that property back a couple of years ago, remember on Carter Winkie, that unfortunately ended in a murder? You know, if you remember, that was, it was actually a zoning enforcement for mostly debris, mostly trash. Just jugs and trash and all of that, and if if we had had this in place, it wouldn't have been a zoning case. That probably, we wouldn't have dealt with some of the the old cars and things under this ordinance, but we do ninety percent of what made that place look terrible was just trash, just nobody was bringing things to dump, they just used the five acres to throw their trash outs on. So that would have been one where this would have been very helpful if we had it in place.
Well, at at a minimum, it'd be interesting to see what comments we get in a public hearing on this, because.
Well, yeah, I I'm I'm willing to go to public hearing with those, I think.
That was my.
Yeah, yeah, but I wanna hear the the citizens, uh, their feelings on it.
And this is not an ordinance that the planning commission should have to take any role in, I take it, so it's, it's all on us.
All on you.
Okay. We have consensus.
Yeah, let's make sure this is widely advertised on websites as well as newspapers or what, I mean, I I think we should this should be used in part to have a sort of a community discussion, if you will.
Well, one of the things you can do, too, is have have more than one public hearing, when you run the newspaper ad, say it's gonna be open for public hearing two different dates. And and, you know, we can, we don't, public hearing ad doesn't have to have one public hearing, we could have two if we wanted, or have a couple of public comment periods, you know, you can certainly advertise more than just one public hearing. And which maybe will signal to the public, we really wanna know what you have to say on this.
And I think we do, I mean, I I don't, I, as Mark said, I, my reaction as well was, let's hear what, let's hear from the public on this. I mean, I've heard from them saying we want this. Probably not universal.
It all depends, if it's the guy with the trailer, he's got no need for it, but.
So do you want multiple public hearings?
I don't have a problem with that, a couple.
I don't either, or or at least, uh, you know, ma- giving them easy ways to get their comments to us, whether that's use the comment feature on the website and or a couple of public hearings, or, you know, whatever else works, I I I don't know what all the lists should be, but I I think we should we we should take the extra step to get this publicized so that people have the opportunity to comment.
I would suggest perhaps scheduling a public hearing at your first meetings of two succeeding months, so that's not a way to give a thirty-day period between the two, we would push it out as a duties flash, and then we can, we can do that kind of uh.
You kind of put a first reading and a second reading.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, good, good, I mean, something like that. Yes, dear.
I think that's a good idea, I think Brian's idea is good.
So, what are we, what are we set that up for?
When, I don't, when would you be able to advertise it first?
We could do it at the first meeting in March, um, which would be March eighth.
And then, um, we can have the second one on, um, April twelfth, be the first meeting in April.
Okay.
That'd be good. Is that also the budget meeting?
Uh, the budget public hearing is April fifth.
Fifth, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay.
So, actually, it'd be the second meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because of the budget, right.
First regular meeting, I should think.
Okay.
We did it.
Well...
Excellent. You're good at this.
It's the one thing I always worked at, was to get, get through this stuff. Uh, all right, well, I guess then, take a nine minute recess until we start the meeting. That was the setup, sorry. All right, okay. Call the meeting door, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and evergreen, and justice for all. Okay. Uh, there are no changes to the agenda, so I would look for a...
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, just, just one other, uh, Mr. Frame had asked me, uh, for some discussion on H, House Bill eight twelve.
Oh, that's right.
And we'll make that item D, under my report, County Administrator seven D, a discussion on House Bill eight twelve, short-term rentals and residential events.
Okay. Excuse me, I was ahead of my time there. Okay, uh, are there any other changes? Hearing now, I look for a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, next we move on to the special presentations, and service awards.
All right, um... Chairman, we're recognizing, uh, several, uh, I guess, a number of employees today for years of service. Uh, we have two here today, uh, Cindy Harbin, uh, with the accounting offices here. And she's a payroll accountant, uh, and has ten years of service.
Only ten is it, like, you've been here forever?
You can give me extra credit.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Yes.
The next, uh, is, uh, Donell Page. Uh, twenty years of service with the Orange County Sheriff's Office as a crime analyst.
Wow. How many bad guys you get? None.
Those are the only employees, uh, that are here today. We also will be sending and recognizing Patricia Keister, uh, five years, Gordonsville Librarian. Thomas Waddy, five years, Orange County Sheriff's Office Deputy. Uh, Randall Amos, ten years, Orange County Sheriff's Office's Court Security. And Carol Wald, uh, ten years' service as a library aide at the Wilderness Branch. And those are all our service awards for today.
Okay. Uh, next then, we will move to the business spotlight. Martha, help me not butcher this Korea.
Korea, it's fine.
All right.
Yeah.
Under the Sun Natural Foods.
Yeah. Good evening, my name is Martha Correa. I think this is a wonderful opportunity to share with you about goals and projects at Under the Sun Natural Foods. The store is located in the Cell Mill Complex, next to Dr. Mary's office, at three oh five North Madison Road. My husband, Doder, and I attend our customers, along with some volunteers and students from Heartland College. This store was established in October two thousand fourteen, with the purpose to helping the Orange community have better health by practi- practicing what we call the A laws of health. Do you know what they are? Let me talk briefly about each of these remedies. Water, sunshine, fresh air, exercise, good nutrition, rest, trust in God, and temperance. Every day, we should drink eight glasses of water. And we be out in the sunshine at least ten minutes. Fresh air, I think we live in a town where, where the air is not contaminated too much. If we take five deep breaths every day, our brain can receive good oxygen, and we can have better attitude and better concentration. Exercise is my favorite. Try to make a habit with exercising about twenty or thirty minutes every day. That could be walking, jogging, running, or working out at the gym. Rest, it is very important to sleep at least six or seven hours every night, as well as setting aside a quality time for you and your family to enjoy one another. Trust in the Lord. It's the food that we need to give to our souls, contemplating His life and knowing more about Him. Temperance is self-control and balance in everything we do. While we shouldn't sleep or watch TV and eat all day long, neither do we overwork. Nutrition is while we are focusing on Under the Sun Natural Foods. We offer good organic and natural products to arouse on our prices. Whether you are looking for some dry fruit and mixed nuts to snub, or vegetarian meat alternatives, and bulk products to use for cooking, we can help you to find what you need. We believe that your food should be your medicine. During cooking classes that are held on the third Thursday of each month, different presenters share ways to improve your health. They discuss things like how to avoid certain illness, how to combine different foods, why we should change the way we eat, and the rewards for making good choices with various substitutions. Then, they demonstrate how to make a healthy meal and share some samples with everyone. Our most recent project is the juice bar. We create our own recipes for green and citrus juices, and green and fruit smoothies. We also have grape, uh, wheatgrass, and ginger chods available. Using helps you absorb more nutrients, because a large quantity of arrow fruits and vegetables are concentrated into one cup. You can get more servings of vegetables per day, as well as greater vari- variety. Using also promotes weight loss, boosts your immune system, increase your energy, and support your brain health. Our juice bar is now open to the public, and we make the juices fresh to order for each customer. Our work hours are Monday to Thursday, from eight thirty to seven, thir- um, Friday, eight thirty to four, Saturday class, and Sunday, eleven to five. We hope that with the support from the people of the Town of Orange, this el- this small business can help people to avoid lifestyle disease and improve their health. We la- we love to have, have you at the store and serve you. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very interesting.
There it is.
I like the line she used, that your food should be your medicine. Interesting. Concept.
It's a lot better than medicine.
That's right.
All right, uh, there was one thing I forgot here. On the consent agenda, I'd like to pull the work session off of that since I wasn't here. Act on that separately. So, uh, having moved out the work session, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then the, uh, work session.
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's Dane, okay. Uh, move on then to the Department Director Constitutional Officer Reports Tourism Quarterly Report with Lee.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, since I last came before you, we have gone, we are currently in and have gone through kind of the slower season for tourism as we do every year. So, this is the time of year when we do our bigger projects and try to wrap up some of those projects before we head into the spring into our busy season. Uh, one of the ongoing projects that we had was to come up with a tagline. Last time I was here, I told you that we were contemplating the Simply Stunning, uh, tagline for Orange. Um, since then, we've met with our subcommittee of the Tourism Advisory Committee, as well as the entire Tourism Advisory Committee, and got them to weigh in on the tagline, as well as about four different designs that we had for it with different colors and different layouts. Um, the one that is in the Tourism Quarterly Report is the one that the majority of the Tourism Advisory Committee agreed upon, as well as Brian and myself. So, we are moving forward with that. We are, um, have told our designers to start incorporating that into all of our ads, publications, and it will be incorporated into our new website. Um, as far as the love artwork, I had mentioned that before, that we were having Steve Stokes do some, uh, love artwork here in the Town of Orange, but it will be mobile, so that it can be used at events and at other places in the ta- in the County of Orange. Um, he has started work on it, and we have received the fifteen hundred dollars from Virginia Tourism Corporation as a reimbursement for the material cost, for it to start that. So, that project is on track, and it should be finished in, in the spring of this year. Um, as I mentioned, we are currently still working on the upgrade for our website. We've gotten the first, um, kind of concept of it, and we have worked with the Tourism Advisory Committee. We've sent out an email to them asking for suggestions, and given them the concept so that they can have a viable part in this. They are still discussing, um, what if any budgetary funds they wanna put toward an upgrade to this website. Um, the current website, the current upgrades that we're gonna do to the website are Google Calendar, to make it better, uh, more accessible to find out the events and the goings on in Orange. Um, we're also going to incorporate the mobile responsive design, which is something that we desperately needed, because in an analysis of the website, we found that, um, fifty-one percent of the people who are accessing our website are now doing it by tablet or mobile phone. So, that's the first time that we've seen that overtake, um, laptop or desktop computers. So, it's definitely, we're actually behind the times with not having a mobile responsive design, uh, website, so we're definitely gonna get that done in the next few, um, ne- this year. As well, um, we are incorporating a few other, um, things like a notify me system on there, where we can develop a newsletter of what's going on in Orange County and send it out to the people, similar to what is happening with the Orange County government website, so we're looking forward to that. Um, also, in December, we worked with the Office on Youth and hosted a Meet the Princesses event out at the airport. It was a conjunction with the Holiday Parade. All of the princesses that participated in this went over and then participated in the Holiday Parade, which was a good synergy between the two. Um, the admission fee for this was a non-perishable food item for the food pantry, so we made a nice donation to them after this event. And we just appreciate all the participation of Ms. Virginia, Ms. Dogwood, and all the other local beauty pageant vendors who participated. We had about nine princesses out there, so it was a very good event, and the people who attended it really appreciated it. Um, I'd like to highlight our volunteers a little bit, because as you, as you all know, we can't operate our visitor center here in Orange without our volunteers. Our thirty-eight volunteers are very, very dedicated, and this past year, they gave us, they donated over two thousand hours to our visitor center, which is worth gold to all of us. Um, so, we took them on a volunteer appreciation trip to Colonial Williamsburg. And typically, every year, we do two events. We do the volunteer appreciation trip in the fall, and then we do a Christmas luncheon. But this year, we combined the two together, 'cause we thought it was nice to do a Christmas luncheon in Colonial Williamsburg, and they're all decorated for Christmas and everything, so it was very well received by the volunteers. I think we've had the most attendance to this event, to this, uh, trip that we've had from the volunteers for a number of them. So, it was a wonderful day, and they all very much appreciated Orange County recognizing, um, their contributions. And lastly, I wanna mention is, along with the volunteers, is that we were notified, um, by press release from the governor's office, that he is doing some volunteerism awards. And so, we gave our volunteers, um, some kudos and sent out a nomination form to the governor to recognize our volunteers for all the work that they do at our visitor center and all that they do for Orange County. So, we're hoping to find out about that in the upcoming months. Any questions, gentlemen?
How did everybody go to Williamsburg?
Huh?
How did everybody get to Williamsburg?
On a bus. We rented a bus from Blue Ridge Tours in Coal Cover.
Okay.
Dave Messick. Mm-hmm.
Cool.
We use them and the Blue Ridge over in, we have both Blue Ridge's we use, which gets kinda confusing, but, um, we use the others over at Massanut, and so, we try to rotate each year, and we have onstand, go- ongoing relationships with both of them.
Okay. You, you didn't mention the award to Luca, but that's a big deal as well, obviously.
Oh, yes, absolutely, I'm sorry.
Well, no, no, I, I just...
The award to Luca was definitely a big deal. Definitely. Anything else?
Appreciate the volunteerism, that's for sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Kelly Attorney Report.
I have nothing.
Uh, County Administrator Report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, let me, uh, just bring, and make, before I can make my comments here, uh, I think, given the level of this, uh, project and, and the many parts of it, we're going, everybody's gonna be prepared, we're gonna have something to do with this, pretty much every agenda, I think, for foreseeable future. And so, I'm gonna try to manage these elements, um, and, and keep them to, to the four, uh, the four elements that I've identified, so that each one of them will, uh, have their own heading going forward. With regards to the network project, uh, let me back up, uh... Let me get my order straight here. With, with the network project, uh, in my agenda, uh, I, uh, board report, I had indicated that the broadband committee, um, wanted to see if there was an opportunity, or had, better understand how the public safety telecommunications networks towers... Could be dual purpose, meaning they could be used for, uh, to support and host the radio transmitters and, and, and technical antenna equipment for the public safety communication system, but also be used by wireless internet service providers, provide wireless internet service, fee-based, for-profit companies into the rural areas that were, uh, where it's not available. Uh, what we've come up with is, there's a gentleman by the name of Dominic Arcuri, who used to work for RCC Consultants. I've worked with him over quite some time. Uh, and I talked with him of how we might be able to make sure that our, the engineering company that we would hire to design the public safety network would be able to understand that we wanna dual purpose these towers, the fiber optic backhaul, and, and, and leverage that, that network to provide for a rural broadband solution. He understood exactly what I would think the, the committee and, and others, uh, on staff would desire to do, and he felt, uh, very comfortable in helping us write an RFP, now, I'm gonna be real careful, an RFP to hire an engineering firm who would design the public safety communication system. He'd be essentially a technical advisor to us as we go through this process. One thing that he told us, uh, told me was that we wanna be sure that we're asking the firm to do something specifically, not assuming that they know what we're asking for, since this dual purpose of towers is... not assuming that they know what we're asking for since this dual purpose of towers is, is, is one-off from what they typically do. He's very comfortable, comfortable that they have the engineering qualifications to do it. We have to be, uh, pretty specific to what we're asking them to do.
The, the, if I might, the distinction I think that, that he drew, and I think it, it's the correct one, is that we, we put out a list of specification or requirements, if you will, and, and ask the, the, the design be, uh, directed toward meeting those specifications as opposed to try to prejudge ourselves what we might think we want in, in these kind of things. And I think that's a, that's a big step in the right direction from the standpoint of we deal with requirements and specifications and, and let the responders come up with the solutions.
Thank you, Mr. White. And, and so what we're going to do is we're deferring that you authorizing us to, to distribute an RFP until we have a meeting, uh, next week with him and, and the staff members. Uh, Mr. Johnson and Mr. White will be there. From that meeting, he's already drafted up kind of a task list that he would do. I feel very comfortable that we would come to you all in the twenty-third and also having the package, at least a, a scope, uh, work, uh, budget deliverables, those kind of things to help us do an RFP. That, that's his engagement. Um, so that would then move us in a position to then perhaps release, um, an RFP sometime in, 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 you know. I guess he, it wouldn't take, I haven't talked to him how long it would take for him to come up with a draft RFP, but he did and reviewed these and responded to these over the course of a twenty, thirty year career. So I, I don't think it's gonna be too, too much time. I'll stop right there. Uh, as far as the partnerships, I have made contact with my counterparts in Louisiana, Savannah, and they understand that we're starting down this road and certainly, uh, are ready for me to engage them at the point that I can talk to them a little bit more, uh, specifically than where we are right now. The consolid, uh, stated facility, that's going to be the subject of, uh, Mr. Vaughn and his proposal later under new business, old business, I'm sorry. Uh, with regard to the fiber optic network and the rural broad- broadband service initiative. As the board knows, I attended, along with Dr. Tanner, accompanied me, the Louisa County Public School Board meeting last week where I distributed that white paper, that broadband collaborative. Um, I guess the best way to characterize it is that the school board is absolutely very supportive of trying to see if there's a way their, uh, project, having much like the Orange County Public School Project, it's called E-Rate Funds, to help bring in a, a fiber optic, uh, network, uh, are most willing to work with their, Orange County schools as well as the Orange County government and, and Louisa County government, uh, a- as may be, may be, uh, appropriate. Um, this chair there, uh, certainly, uh, expressed a, a resounding support, but understood that they weren't, there was no commitment of action that, that our work on this doesn't commit any, any boards to any, any course of action. And I have since been talking with their Director of Information Technology, Daryl Hetfield, the, Hetfield, the Orange County, um, uh, director, uh, Public Schools Director of Information Technology has talked to him. And as I understand it, the RFPs, meaning the request for proposals to build a fiber optic network, uh, uh, is that it's starting to get quite a bit of interest, uh, from, uh, some pretty well-qualified companies. More to come on that. Uh, we'll, I, I see us having an agenda item once the, uh, request for proposals process is closed on these, for these companies to come back to you all to help better explain and better understand what you all's role because there is a match requirement that the schools will need, uh, as well as you all's participation in these projects to, uh, to, to take advantage of, of, of the E-Rate, the schools initiative. Let me stop right there. Um, the next thing I have for you gentlemen today is, uh, talking with the county attorney and talking with both, uh, Mr. Johnson and Mr. White, I think I would recommend, uh, it may be appropriate for you all to be briefed or at least reported by the county attorney and myself on what a broadband authority does, wireless broadband authority under Virginia's Enabling Statute does, and what it doesn't do. I think it's important to know what it does and doesn't do. I'm of, becoming more of the opinion that as this project develops, all of these pieces having to do with telecommunications, the fiber optic network, the wireless initiative for rural, uh, Orange County, that the broadband authority may be the better, uh, entity to handle this because the enabling legislation is, uh, is more business-like, more enterprise-focused, much like a, uh, a water and sewer, sewer's, uh, authority. Um, certainly this board would have direct oversight. In fact, I would recommend, uh, the, the board populate the authority, uh, to, to a great degree. Board members would. So on that, I'll stop. I know I've talked to Mr. Johnson and Mr. White about all of this and they may have some comments, but I think if, if you all are okay, we'll be prepared to report on wireless broadband authorities, uh, at the October twen- uh, October, February twenty-third. I think I've covered the waterfront. Looking at everybody, have I missed anything or?
On the broadband authority, I mean, I think the right next step is for us to get more information about what they can and can't do and whether it fits our needs and these kind of things. I mean, it's, it's certainly an option that's worth learning more about.
Oh, is that something that basically as the board decides it wants to go that way, can just pretty much proceed and set it up, or is there some?
I have a research, but I think you have to go to the General Assembly.
No, it's, it's, it's a state corporation.
Cor- I'm sorry, SEC. I do think you have to get approval, but I think it's per- formal.
It's to get a charter, uh, you all would have a public hearing to create an ordinance that creates the body and things like that. We'll have a copy of what, uh, uh, bylaws look like, kind of the structure and things like that.
Good.
All right.
Uh, all right, that takes care of that. Uh, operating budget. Um, I guess, uh, yes, we have a budget. Uh, uh, that was supposed to be a joke. But, uh, uh, the Director of Finance and I have been working, uh, uh, pretty diligent in the last couple of weeks. Um, let me at the outset tell you gentlemen that, uh, in my opinion, all of your, the, the, all of your county functions that receive you all's res- resources that you allocate, everybody came to the table with, I think, as a responsible budget. There wasn't anything that, uh, frankly was, uh, uh, I guess startling or not, not within, I think, the directives you all have, have set forth as a matter of strategy for the county. So I was real pleased with that and I think at, at the end of the day, everybody was pre- very responsible with their budgets. We get in this perennial thing of what we need to do versus the available resources and what we would like to do and available resources, and that's what Glenda and I have been, been working through the last several weeks. Uh, with that, uh, we are prepared, uh, uh, to present a budget to you in, uh, about two and a half weeks, I guess. It would be whenever that would be scheduled, the twenty-fifth, I think it is.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, I'm sorry, on the twenty-third, the, two weeks from today. Uh, so we're in the mode, we are, uh, in process or have scheduled our one-on-one interviews, or interviews. Our one-on-one inter- uh, consultations with you individually. We did that last couple of years and I think everybody felt that was a good, good way of us at least, uh, giving, giving the budget. Um, so that's taken care of. The only action items on the budget that I would ask you all to do is, if you remember when we scheduled, you all adopted your budget schedule, we had a lot of work sessions. We had a lot of dates reserved because we thought we were in a reassessment mode that accelerated the, the, the public hearing. Um, we do not need work sessions that have been identified and advertised for next Tuesday, the twenty-third, nor the twenty-fifth, uh, excuse me, sixteenth and eighteenth. We do not need the work sessions. So what I, I'd like an action, action tonight to cancel those two work sessions unless you all want them, but we wouldn't have anything to work.
Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll get the appropriate notices out. Um, we're monitoring the General Assembly, uh, on the budget, particularly on the school side. Uh, we, uh, Glenda and I have been in, uh, quite a bit of conversations with Dr. Tanner and, and Mr. Bryant. We in fact met with them last week and understanding the schools board's, uh, request, uh, budget proposal will be coming to you tonight formally. We understand where the nu- number is. Uh, we also know the, the amount of available revenue that we have, uh, to, to bring forward to schools, which will all get presented and sorted out in due course. Um, other than that, I think I've covered everything, Glenda. So that's where we are on the budget. Uh, everything's on course for us to, for you all to get it and then you move with it a- as you all see fit. All right, that, uh, building permit fees. Uh, Mr. Chairman, oh, Allison put this together, but we have building permit fee, uh, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but, uh, contractor had a permit for a generator, uh, canceled it and then, uh, permit was never used and contractor's requesting a refund. These, the way these are processed, it's seventy-five percent of the original permit value, which would amount to a refund of a hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents to Never Dark Hole House Generators LLC.
Seventy-five percent is our practice. I move that we proceed.
Uh, motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, I have one, one last item. Um, as you know, our legislative practice while the General Assembly's in session is either, uh, staff or, or you all identify, particularly through VACO's capital, uh, contact alerts pending legislation and whether, uh, you as a board, by consensus, this is not a vote, whether there's a, uh, communicated by consensus of a majority of you all to express position either in favor or against pending legislation. And that works quite well when I get about three, three of you all, I, I, I move forward. Um, there was one bill, House Bill eight twelve, which, uh, is regulating, uh, short-term rentals in residential areas. You all went through this, uh, quite a bit of, uh, discussion and, and regulation, uh, with the bed and breakfasts here in, in, in the county. This is a, this legislation is aimed at Airbnb and those software platforms. And essentially, what it does is it preempts local zoning so that you wouldn't be able to regulate those under, uh, some certain very limited circumstances. Uh, Mr. Frame had, uh, was interested in expressing opposition, uh, to this legislation. Heard from a couple of you that were similar of mind, heard, uh, other, uh, that was not of that mind. And so Mr. Frame, who couldn't be here, asked me to bring it to you all to maybe have a discussion and, and direction, either one way or the other. I think he, he certainly is in, in opposition to this and certainly understands the board was supposed to support or be neutral on, I guess would be another way of doing it. So, um, just looking for some direction.
I, I, I'm neutral on the subject.
I, I wa- I was fine with that because, uh, yeah, but I, I like it a little local control. We have enough Big Brother control.
I agree.
I, uh, I, I, I think it's a mayor's nest and it's difficult and quite frankly, I don't really have a problem in this case with the state deciding to deal with it at their level. We, we have enough trouble trying to figure out where we're gonna allow censurers and censurers, so, um.
Can you imagine a hundred of us trying to figure this out?
And, and I guess I also feel like sometimes we would, we should pick our battles when we, when we deal with Richmond. Uh, and I'm not sure this is one that we, number one, have much of a chance of winning and, uh, number two, with, you know, that it really rises to the level of something we should jump up and down about. Not that anyone was suggesting we jump up and down, but.
Typically, when there's not a, a settled sense of the board, I usually communicate that a sense, a consensus of majority of the members and just leave it at that. Uh, and I'll just, I'll shoot, this is already passed out of the House. I mean, some of this is the, the.
Kind of moot now anyway.
Yeah, that's, I think that's the other point.
So, but I'll, I'll send them, you all will be copied when I do it, to Delegate Freedus and Senator Reeves, but I'll communicate that it's a sense of majority of the board, so. Uh, with that, that's all I had.
You're holding Lee's proxy as a lawyer?
No, sir. I, well, I'm, I'm counting to three, so. That's why I'm communicating a sense of majority of the board, so.
Okay. Uh, move on to new business then.
Yes, sir.
We have none. Um.
Actually, I do real quick.
Oh, okay.
Since we were on the, the, the bills, um, State Bill seven thirty-five, um, was from Senator Boobersham. And it's, uh, reducing the time period for a local planning commissioner or other agent to act on or propose a plot site plan or plan development for commercial developments. They're trying to reduce it from sixty days to thirty days and the original submission shortens from forty-five to twenty days. I think that puts an undue, uh, burden on departments within the county to always have to be under that time period. I, I think our departments do a good job of trying to stay, but when things have to go to DEQ and VDOT and such, getting the information back does not give them enough time to, to act on it, so.
Was it specifically asking for the entire package or just the portions that we're responsible for?
No, it's, it's requo- for what we're responsible for. But we cannot render an outcome until we hear back from DEQ and VDOT, or the Health Department. So it's imposing something on us that we can't do. Because I think for the most part, uh, Josh, would you say that's not a, a push on a lot of projects?
Be a tight squeeze.
Yeah.
Um, this came as an alert today or within the last day or so.
Uh, yeah, today.
I'm looking at the, at the, I think Legislative Information Service. Uh, this is still sitting in the Committee on Local Government in the Senate. It hasn't, they haven't done anything with it. Um, how about if I do this? Let me send out a copy of the VACO alert as well as a copy of the bill. And if you all are inclined, I can communicate to Senator Reeves and, uh, Delegate Freedus whether there's
Okay, that's.
opposition or support or neutral.
Okay.
My opinion, just re- and I read it when it came in pretty quickly, it really is tightening up. I mean, one of the things in here, instead of ten days, meaning to, to process an application and get it out to the commenting agencies, we have to do it in seven days.
Right.
And, and, you know, one of the things, then, that becomes a mandate on us to have the staffing in order so we don't violate this, this law to be able to reach that capacity. I, I don't frankly know why the other days weren't working. I'm, I don't, you know, we've never had any problems with, with our current time.
Obviously, somebody would like to shove that down our throats.
Uh, I'll, we'll get this out to you all tomorrow, uh, by email and then we'll take it from there.
All righty. Well, then we'll move on to old business.
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, uh, we have provided in our separate cover a copy of Mr. Vaughn's proposal. I'll let him, uh, I'll ask Randy to come, come up today. I know Kurt, Kurt worked with Randy, I think, to, to get this proposal uh, nailed down. I looked at it a couple of times over the course of the last two weeks. So, uh, Randy, uh, welcome.
Afternoon evening. Thanks for having me back once again. Um, what I have, uh, presented to Kurt and I assume has been passed on to you all is a scope of work for the, uh, proposal to do the initial study, uh, for the public safety facility. Uh, this is a carry-on from the conversation we had a couple of weeks ago when I was up. And this is a, a formal, uh, proposal for that initial study. Uh, it basically would, uh, break the study into two phases. One is the needs assessment, uh, where we, uh, gather the information that's, uh, needed to determine what needs to be in the building, what characteristics the building has to have, um, and put sort of a numerical, uh, evaluation of that together. Uh, that would be brought and presented to you guys for, uh, review and comment, uh, when that's done. And then once you have, uh, uh, we've all reached agreement on that, uh, particular, uh, aspect of it, then we will move into a conceptual phase, uh, which is where we would do, uh, a then we would move into a conceptual phase, uh, which is where we would do, uh, preliminary layouts of the buildings, uh, to be vetted out with you. So it kind of takes those numeric numbers and puts them into physical rooms and arrangements to sort of test out that, that number. Uh, and that was very similar to the, uh, the diagrams that I'd shown to you the last time around, uh, that, for the Stanton study that we had talked about. So, um, that would be the second phase of, of the, uh, study. And that would al- and that we would also be identifying characteristics for the site. How big do you think the site needs to be, what kind of, uh, infrastructure in the site we want to have, uh, those types of things. And we would also establish a, a, a preliminary budget for the, uh, for the facility. So, um, that's sort of it in a, in a nutshell. If you had any particular questions about it or anything that, uh, any questions or, uh, things that I can answer about it, I'd be glad to do so at this time.
Randy, one thing that, and I, I can't spot it all of a sudden, but, uh, there was the inclusion of a couple of, uh, fire and emergency services apparatus, crew, crew and apparatus. I know that was something that I think was in the Stanton one, but I'm not sure that we got to the point of deciding whether to include or exclude that or not. And, and I, I just want to make sure that, that, I, I don't really care whether it's th- there or not, but it needs to be done in such a way that we can either peel it off or leave it in. Because it, it, it changes some of the design of what that building would be, it seems to me like, and so.
I think that was, uh, just one or two days, like a pumper and an ambulance. That, uh, if I'm not mistaken, John's still here, yeah, uh, for, mainly for day staffing. Is that, would be the primary?
Again, we need to look at the, the whole picture of future party in our station, where this building possibly is going to be located and how that will impact future building, but essentially.
That was my concern, is that, that the location of the, the crew and the apparatus is, is very geographic dependent in terms of meeting service standards and things. And it, it, it probably shouldn't drive the location of this. If it works out, great, but, but I don't think it can become a, a design criterion, if you will, in terms of either driving the design or more importantly, driving the, the location, that was my only.
Right, and I, I guess I had some misunderstanding. I thought that it was included for the staff positions to be able to either put an extra medic unit in service during the day if the need were to arise and they were available, or run an engine company if need be, was what I, what I had understood. And I may have had that wrong.
Well, and, and there was one other consideration, I think, is a comfortable discussion. Right now, we have a medic unit out of Orange County Rescue Squad, uh, Orange Rescue Squad Facility. And this was, uh, understanding that that may have to be relocated to some other, other location, which would potentially be this. But I agree with Mr. White, this is a very geographic censor- uh, sensitive location for this unit. But understanding the space allocation and the cost will help, I guess, get our arms around what, what this is, but you can always.
Could, could that be a modular portion?
Sure, yeah, we can, we can look at it that way, we can break that out of the, uh, you know, of the sub- have a subset of that, uh, of the space that would be needed for that. And then we can decide whether that goes in or goes out. Cause you're right, it is a very geographic sensitive, uh, response times and those types of things get into.
And my concern is I didn't want to see that get im- embedded in the design and, and become, you know.
Limit, limit your options.
Start limiting options and these kind of things before we made that decision explicitly, so.
Yes, yeah, so, so, and, and we can reflect that in, in the study.
Yeah, alright, if the board is prepared to take action, my recommendation would be to engage, uh, Mr. Vaughn Wiley Wilson as proposed, uh, with the funds of twenty-nine, not exceed twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, uh, to become from our project development fund in the capital, uh, improvements budget.
That was gonna be my other question, where, where's the money?
We, we have a project development fund that has sufficient dollars for this type of work, this pre-planning. Um, I had just noted to, uh, Allison, and I'll bring back to you at the next board meeting, uh, rev- reimbursement resolutions for you to adopt. Should that proj- elements of these, all these projects be financed at some point, you can reimburse yourselves. This doesn't rise, I think this is something we just cash funds out of a project development fund, the CIP.
The, the ninety days, is that compatible with decisions that we need to make with respect to the radio system? Cause we don't, this needs to be somewhat in front of that, I think, is the.
Well, I, 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 I see the RFP for the design services going out. And that's gonna take, that's an eighteen-month kind of process, but I, I absolutely think we can, uh, we've got a, a fiber optics piece, and, uh, I'll use Mr. Mr. Johnson's. We've got a i- puzzle made of ice that we're trying to get pieces together before, before they, they melt. But I'm, I'm comfortable with ninety days, I know Randy can probably do sixty days if, if need comes to the point.
Love it.
And, and so we'll, no pressure, right?
Yeah, no pressure, we'll work to you.
But I, 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 I think, I think we're on track. Uh, but I take your points, we'll maybe real sensitive of concurrentness of, uh.
One, an item of guidance that, that we probably need to give to, to Randy and, and, and as a matter of fact, the, the departments involved in this is, are we designing for today's need, the five-year need, the twenty-year need, or what? Uh, I, I, I think it would be, when you start having the discussions or, or, uh, the sheriff and others start filling out the, your, your questionnaire, I think that, that there needs to be some consistency of time arising that we're dealing with here. I, I, I don't have one to suggest necessarily, but my guess is it's not today and it's not five, it probably is some other number. We talked about that, I don't know that, that, did you identify a timeframe in?
I'm not sure that I specifically put it in this proposal. We typically like to, to look at a twenty-year window, I think that's, so.
And that's probably the right number, I mean, I, but I think you ought to, you ought to know that going forward to.
Yeah, and, and we'll include that, uh, I typically put that in the wording of the, when I start the review, or the, uh, questions. I think if you try to look out much further than that, it's really gets to be a crystal ball. If you're looking shorter than that, then, you know, our time to facilities, you could go through this whole process, get a facility done, you're five years into a, you know, ten or fifteen-year, uh, look, look ahead. You've really, uh, not kind of thought it through all the way, so, um, I think that, that's a reasonable time. And then I also do, uh, would recommend that we would, you know, put some foreseeable future, uh, contingency in there so that there is, you know, if we think we need a facility that requires five acres, that we go ahead and get seven or eight or something like that to, to make sure we've got some future growth built in and not, uh, not, uh, you know, back ourselves and don't put our, down the road.
Okay.
Yes, sir, motion being to authorize us to, authorize me to engage, uh, Mr. Vaughn Wiley Wilson as proposed, uh, with, uh, funding to come from the project development fund of the capital improvements, uh, budget.
Second. Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next, four comments.
I'm, one comment that, uh, I, I really just want to get on, on the record. My comment stems from an article that was in the Freelance Star on the first of February that pointed to population changes in our area since the two thousand and ten census and also year over year from two thousand and fourteen to today. Orange is striking in the lack of population change. My, my quick back-of-the-envelope math, if we conclude, uh, counties within a twenty-five to thirty-mile radius, they were growing at, uh, somewhere around four percent or a little over four, uh, and maintained that growth through two thousand and fifteen. Compare, Orange by comparison grew one point six percent over that five-year and three-month period. We added five hundred people to the county in five years and three months. And interestingly, between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen, we lost population. We lost one point three seven percent, uh, which really means we lost what we gained in five years and three months, we lost in one year. I say that because if you look at some counties that historically have been losing population, uh, in, in the state of Virginia, those are probably not places you want to be. Are they rural? Hell, yeah, they're rural. Is it a place you want to live? Not likely. They're closing schools and losing doctors' offices and all sorts of budgetary problems and everything else, so beware of what you ask for. Another piece of information that contributes to this, and I think has to factor in our decision-making, is the fact that we're, for the first time in a long time, we're losing school population. Probably correlates very highly with losing population. Another thing that I think correlates with this is the fact that our open land value in this last reassessment went down. Probably also correlates with demand for land, which doesn't exist. So, uh, there's, there's hard data facing us that I think we, uh, need to be considering going forward and, and making decisions and, uh, be, be very careful. I, there, I can tell you from firsthand experience growing up that, uh, depopulation is a death spiral that is very, very hard to turn around.
Anything else?
Yeah, after that, good news.
You, you sort of killed that one, James, huh? Alright, informational items, any questions on those? We have any appointments? Okay, uh, any questions on the calendar? Everyone other thinks.
Alright, ready?
Yes.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following. One, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, which says consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. And three matters concerning the salary performance of specific personnel. And whereas pursuant to sections two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight-one and eight-seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussion may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County is hereby authorized the discussion of the four said matters in closed meeting.
With the motion.
You're right.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're closed.
By the way, if you can see the blue on the state of Virginia map, blue means decline.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Goodwin.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
And Mr. Frame's absent.
Okay, being at seven o'clock, it is time for public comment. Has anyone signed up?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, or Vice Chairman, I'm sorry, not at this time.
That's alright, I go by either one, so. Uh, okay, having no pub- public.
I have signed up for public hearing.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, uh, with that, then we will go to the public hearing, amendments to the zoning ordinance. Anybody to speak to that or?
Gentlemen, before you this evening is a zoning text amendment specifically to the general industrial I-two zoning district. If you recall back in, um, November, I believe it was, um, the board initiated planning commission action to look at the outdated setback in buffer yard requirements, uh, in that zoning district. So we brought that to the planning commission and we presented them the option of either addressing those two things specifically or going with a full rewrite of the district. Um, the district dated back to nineteen ninety-six, it was really outdated with a lot of its language, so, bearing a recommendation from staff, planning commission voted to go ahead and proceed with the full rewrite of the I-two. Um, so that is the public hearing this evening and what's before you. Um, I believe you have a slightly revised resolution in front of you. There were two recommendations on some use changes, which are reflected in the ordinance before you, um, which are two proposed, permitted uses that were moved to special uses. One was a materials recovery facility. And the second was manufacturing, uh, carbon fiber and fiberglass products. So before you is the planning commission's recommendation of approval. Um, they voted four to one to recommend what's before you this evening. So, I'll keep it short and sweet and open it to any questions.
I have a couple of specifics, but I'll wait them after the public hearing, revisit.
So there's one was materials recovery and the other was manufacturing, uh.
Uh, manufacturing of carbon fiber and fiberglass products. Staff proposed that as a buy-ret use and, uh, planning commission voted to move it to SUP.
Alright, any other questions for Josh? Alright. With that, then I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers signed up?
We do, we have two speakers, first is Mark Warren, five-two-nine-zero, Ridge Breton.
Good evening, thank you for this time. Tourists come to Orange County for the same reason that our citizens love to live here. It's because of our scenic beauty, it sets us apart from the rest of the counties. The existing zoning provides a minimum buffer from industrial sites of a one hundred feet. But the EDA, uh, and perhaps the zoning staff think that cutting the buffer in half would, would help lure new business to the county. But we hope that you on the Board of Supervisors will be the voice of common sense here. And let's not bite the tourist hand that feeds us. The top two economic engines in the county are tourism and consumer spending by the citizens who choose to live here for our superior quality of life. Please don't jeopardize either one by voting to cut the buffer in half. Other counties may have a fifty-foot buffer, but they may have noise reduction ordinances or other safeguards. We don't have those, so we need the hundred-foot minimum. The good people of Orange aren't against businesses developing here. If somebody wants to put a business on land zone industrial, fine, more power to them, we're all for it. But just don't make everyone who drives by that site every day have to look at it or hear it, so buffer it. Hide it so the tourists will still want to come to Orange and drive our scenic roads and spend their tourist dollars. And certainly county residents who farm or live next to land zone I-two should know that they can keep the one hundred-foot protection they now have to protect the value of their homes and farms. And incidentally, protect the value, those homes and farms generating property taxes that pay for county services. So I ask you to please keep the existing one hundred foot, foot buffer in place. And the other quick point I'd like to make is on the process used here. The whole idea of a public hearing is to get informed input from the public. But this proposal to cut the buffer in half has been rushed through to such an extent that it hasn't been fair to the public or to you gentlemen. Most county citizens, uh, certainly of my generation, don't find the county website particularly useful in terms of getting information. They find it difficult to use, and so what they rely on is the Orange County Review. Usually the newspaper covers the planning commission hearings, publishes an article, and then the citizens are informed. They then talk to each other, do some research, and come before you at your public hearing to address the issue. But in this case, the planning commission hearing on the buffer was held February fourth, five days ago. So the Orange County Review, which is a weekly newspaper, hasn't even been published following the planning commission hearing. So virtually no one in this county knows of this proposal to cut the buffer from one hundred to fifty feet. Yet here we are at the Board of Supervisors' public hearing on the buffer issue. So one might ask, what's the rush? Why not wait thirty days between public hearings? So the public can be informed and present you with informed views. A fifty percent reduction in a buffer is a huge change. So I respectfully ask you to reject the proposal and also to consider adopting a rule for the future to allow adequate time between public hearings of the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Merrill Strange, one nine one nine five Anadale Farm Drive.
Hi, I'm Merrill Strange, and thank you very much for listening to me. I, I agree with Mark of a lot of things he said. I know that if I lived next to a factory in a, an industrial park, which I do, I would really, really like to have a hundred foot buffer. Enough room to plant a visual and, and an auditory buffer between me and what's going on the other side. Especially if you don't know what kind of machinery they're going to be using or how much noise it will make. So I would really appreciate it if you would keep the hundred foot buffer. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers?
No more speakers? Okay, close the public hearing. All right, comments?
Josh, I'm sorry. Josh, I'm, I'm having a senior moment here. I'm looking for the, for the setback. And this, this is what was handed to us right before. I can't, I'm trying to find the setback requirements in here, and I'm not finding it.
Five forty four, look at seventy dash five forty four.
Well, those are.
Go to the, if, if you go to the next page. Buffer requirements under E, I think.
Yeah, but these are, uh, these are buffer requirements, those are not the setback requirements.
Where's the?
Uh, it's still section five forty four. We kept the same section number and just retitled it.
Yeah, but I'm just not finding it, and, and I don't doubt that it's here, I'm just not finding it.
Page.
Let's see, section seventy fifty four is setback in yards, but it's been struck through and it's called site development standards.
And then under subsection B, under there, should be setbacks slash yard requirements.
Okay, well, let's see.
A is lot requirements, B is setback.
Okay. Some reason my eyes were blazing over when I was getting there.
And buffers is section C. No, it's hyped.
Okay, yeah. Now that I see it, I can see it.
If I could address something just real quick, the current ordinance actually has no specific width requirement for the buffer. It just says it's suitably buffered. The setback is the one that's being reduced. Uh, one hundred to fifty. We're actually increasing the buffer requirement.
A setback being simply the distance that it, it has to be from the property line, whereas a buffer is actually something that trees or fences or berms or something that actually blocks visually and, and auditorily.
Mr., uh, Josh, setback regulates the location of improvements to the property, either a structure, vehicle parking area, materials, storage area, those types.
Well, um, I'll, I'll, I'll make some comments, uh, since nobody else is. I'll fill the void. I think frankly, we, we did get a little bit out ahead of ourselves here and probably got this on the fast track when it didn't really need to be on the fast track. Originally was, originally we were dealing with one or two lots in the industrial park who we were looking at needing to perhaps, um, do some changes on. And it grew from that into a countywide approach, which is, while the, the countywide, uh, looking at the countywide map is perhaps needed because as you said, I think you said it was ninety six when it was adopted, or largely adopted. But what was really driving this was something in the industrial park, and it's, 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 does make a lot of sense to me to, to, to jump from the industrial park to the whole county and say we're going to make a huge change. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, everybody involved kind of, I think kind of stubbed their toe on this, including yours truly. So what kind of sounded like a good idea at the time, I, I now have some reservations about. I, I think from the, from the standpoint of being more business friendly, I think it certainly makes some sense to, to try to hold down the amount of land that is, that can't be used. And there are cases where I think a hundred foot is probably more than is needed. Certainly industrial to industrial, I think can be a minimal setback. I think industrial to commercial can be a, a fairly minimal. But when it's industrial to residential, uh, or industrial to agriculture, then I think probably we went a little bit far here. To the extent that we lower the setback, I think we need to beef up the buffer. And I think we need specifics in the buffer regulations making it clear that we're not talking about some scraggly pine trees, but we're talking about a real buffer. Meaning basically something you can't see through or, and that will dampen the noise to a great degree, certainly not completely, obviously.
Yeah, another thing that, that is happening here that I think we need to evaluate probably more thoroughly is the, the merging of covenants that exist at the industrial park that are deep, in effect, deed restrictions that deal with design and, and outdoor storage and all sorts of things like that, and bringing them into the ordinance. I, I think that's probably a good idea. But that's a pretty fundamental change that we're making that's, you know, that goes well beyond the issue of setbacks. Uh, and I don't know that we've given due consideration at this point to that, that inclusion or that movement. I, I think it's, it's more properly placed in the zoning ordinance as you suggest here. I'm just not sure we've captured all the things that, that we need. And I'll give you an example. We, we've taken some of the covenant requirements at the, at the industrial park and created a language that, uh, I'm referring now to page ten, the number five near the top of the page there. It talks about lumberyard, sawmills, and other lumber cutting and servicing facilities. And it says that all cutting, sawing, grinding, and processing should be in a fully enclosed structure. Well, you know, that's not how that world works. In the industrial park, the one place that does those things, it is in an, in, in fully enclosed structure. But out in the industrial settings of the county, those aren't now and probably never will or should be incorporated in fully. So we, we have to be careful that we don't, in the process of bringing in covenant language that applies to the industrial park correctly, so, uh, and, and making it universal when it will not be enforced that way. And that's just one, I found a couple of others, but, uh, so I, I, I think that I for one would like a little bit more time with this and, and maybe, uh, as, as Mark suggests, making sure we understand the balance between buffering and setback a little more thoroughly.
And, and, and coming off of that, I, I think, uh, we're perhaps going to need to do that anyway. But, but I think a, uh, I think a re-advertising of the, of the board, uh, having, holding another public hearing is a good idea because I think it's, it's a very, very good point. The process generally works that the, the planning commission deals with something, and there's at least two, usually it's three or four weeks in there. Allows work to, the, the word to kind of get out and people who are concerned can speak to us. And, uh, you know, that didn't happen here.
Or in the alternative, we focus this back just to the industrial park. We can make changes just in the industrial park, which I, I think we're, it's better off to take the more comprehensive approach. But if we do it, if we do that, I think we need to, to give another opportunity for a public hearing and frankly, some more time for us.
Is that, that suggestion that we're going back to the planning commission with it, or?
I don't think it, I don't think it needs to go to the planning commission. We can hold another public hearing, just the board can decide that we're going to.
Sure, you can hold as many as you want.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask the board maybe make a suggestion. We can schedule this for a work session. You can go through and obviously make whatever edits you want. That's the right next step. And, and then from that authorize the public, advertising of a public hearing subsequent to your revisions.
Okay.
And when, when will we be able to get that work session going? Do we have a backlog of work sessions?
Gosh, we got a whole something going on. We got a budget, oh.
We put that off.
I think we're, right now, I think we're hard pressed to deal with this on the twenty third. And it'll probably move to the first meeting in March. And why don't we go ahead and say the first meeting in March? I mean, I, I, I think the economic development matter in the park is, is, you're always trying to be responsive to business needs and, and I think that's working itself through.
That's March the eighth, right?
Yes, sir, so we would have this as a work session on the March eighth. The public hearing is yet to be.
Right, that's not a public hearing, that's, yeah, that would be at a later time.
Yeah, I would say we make that item number one.
Yes, sir.
I think it's going to take more than five minutes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
No matter who's chairman.
And although we got through two on the night, we usually don't get through but one in a piece, so. I think if we direct that first, then we can actually get something accomplished.
So do we need a motion, uh?
Motion to defer. Will you close the public hearing?
Yes, I close the public hearing.
So motion to defer a vote, then defer it to the work session for further discussion.
Defer action.
Defer action and defer to a work session for further discussion, and action deferred indefinitely until, after the work session.
So action deferred to after a public hearing, or the next public hearing, then, okay. Did you, you have?
I, I, I actually just, excuse me, let me put a fine point on this. Adoption would not be until after another public hearing.
Right, what, what we've said is we're deferred action. Schedule a work session, and then thereafter, another public hearing and another meeting will be scheduled.
No action at the work session.
Right, no action at the work session.
And I just, I have a comment regarding one of the speakers.
Are you seconding for discussion?
I'll say.
There's a motion on the floor. Oh, okay.
There was a comment by one of the speakers about that the Orange Review wasn't out, it only comes out once a week. Orange Review's a great paper. And yes, that's a definite limitation, but if you look at the readership of the Orange Review, it is not very large in this county. Uh, something that we are pushing out right now is a YouTube channel, as well as the county website, which I realize any of our new technology things have issues. But please, people that you know, let them know of the alternative places to look for information. We're constantly asking people to come speak, come attend meetings, and this is one of the better turnouts that we've had. So please let other people know that, uh, we actually do have technology. We're using technology and to, that may be an additional form to follow, to stay informed. Unfortunately, because of the, the timing now as much as anything of the Orange Review, so.
Is it possible to, to get on a distribution list on the website to find out, and how do we do that?
We should have an agenda distribution list, we used to, do we still have them?
We do.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll get your contact information.
Okay.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, that would take us to the school board presentation. Before we do that, I think we wanted to rearrange things, or if we take a.
I was going to move we.
Can't go ahead and do that. Let, let's adjourn, or let's.
Motion's always in.
All right.
You need to call your meeting to order or whatever.
I'd like to call this speech, the school board, to order, please. Can we have roll call? This is Porter.
Here.
And this couch. This is Paige.
Here.
And this is Austin.
Here.
This is Winter.
Here.
Okay, guys, let me tell you right up front, I had some dental work today, so if I drool.
Be nothing out of the ordinary, right?
That's exactly right, Jim, thank you. First of all, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Goodwin and the other supervisors and Mr. David for the privilege of presenting the FY sixteen seventeen budget. It is the responsibility of the school board to compile a need based, a need based budget. And the work of Dr. Alex, the work of Alex Bryan and Dr. Brenda Tanner and other key individuals. I believe that is what we're presenting tonight. I would like to point out a couple of things on the school board priority list. First, it is to attract and retain highly qualified staff who will educate our students. With the increase in healthcare costs and contributions to the VRS, it is a challenge to fund these increases and maintain salaries. This must remain our highest concern because we value all employees. Second, we want to continue to equip our students with the best foundation of learning. It is our responsibility to promote economic growth with career and technical advances, along with fostering a relationship with outside sources. This budget began with a thoughtful process, planning for a positive future. It includes replacement cycles of technology, transportation, and efficiency of operations. In conclusion, this board's commitment to being creative and using resources to maximize the dollar is commendable. Whether it be in performance contracting, joining forces with the county and collaborating on broadband, or applying for grants for E-rate dollars, we look for savings around every corner. We stand firmly with the Board of Supervisors to no longer kick the can down the road, but now unite in confronting the can in the road. Thank you. And at this time, I will talk to the, turn it over.
She's still got that thing.
But your teeth look really nice.
I would like to turn it over to Dr. Tanner and Mr. Alex Bryan, please.
Thank you. Thank you. I think it's commendable that you have that much dental work and you can even stand up, which allows you to be. So, uh, it's my pleasure to be here. It's, I believe, it's my second opportunity here in the time that I've been in Orange to work with you. We really appreciate the partnership that we have with you and look forward to that continued partnership and the work we're doing. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of the board tonight because it's the board's budget now, it's the board's proposed budget. Uh, we began our budget session months ago. Administrators were very thoughtful in the work that they did. Uh, we had quite a few meetings that talked about, uh, understanding the environment in which we all live right now. And so people, as they put forward their requests, were very thoughtful, very mindful in, um, in that, in those that they made. And we had some significant discussions in terms of how do we, uh, know that they're needs based, but how do we prioritize? So months have gone into this work. And as I told the board when we were discussing this, this is a point. And as I told the board when we were discussing this, this is a point in time presentation. It's early. We don't know what's coming out of Richmond. We know what the governor's proposed. Uh, the crossover date is still, um, a couple of weeks away. Uh, we're waiting for that to happen to see if we can get some stability in the recommendations. But, uh, anything we have now is based on assumptions, and the assumptions are as of February the ninth, two thousand sixteen. Those are the assumptions. So, uh, I have a proposal. We have also, um, information in your packet as you go. Whoops, let me see, let me make sure I get this right, because this is gonna be different. Can I just do this? Do this first. Um, I, I'm not going to spend time on this, but I, I encourage you, if you have any questions along the way, to stop and ask questions or save them to the end. Um, I'll be glad to answer any that I can and all that I can, as well as the board members. But we really start with, uh, the mission and vision of the division. Um, and, and we're very mindful of that responsibility we have to, uh, educate our young people in a variety of ways so that they are prepared to go on, uh, we say the twenty-first century, but we're well into the twenty-first century, and be prepared for not only college but careers. Uh, we know that that is an increasing, a conver- a conversation that's increasing, uh, at the state level and the nation, and we want to be part of that, uh, making sure that our students are equipped, uh, to move forward as they leave, uh, the K twelve, really pre-K twelve programs that we have. One of the things that we base our decisions upon and our work on are the strategic plan that was established, um, in Orange years ago, two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen. It's constantly revised and updated. But I highlighted fo- uh, the four, uh, main areas in that. And we tried to build back any of the requests we have for a budget back to those main points, because that's a strategic plan that was developed. So, the highest quality education for all of our students, as you, uh, know, we're very proud of the fact that all of our schools are fully accredited. Um, uh, staff are to be commended for that, work and dedication to that. Uh, not all the school divisions and the Commonwealth can say that, and we know it's because of the work that's there, believing in this highest quality education. The second area that we focus on in this, as you can see, is safe and caring environment. So, when we make requests about security and maintenance, those fall within that umbrella. Um, highly qualified, capable, and diverse employees. We look at competitive salaries. In the business field, you'll talk about a market analysis, a comparison that you do. We often talk about a salary comparison with competitors. And as we go through it, you'll see that years ago, th- this board, uh, worked to have a, a multi-year plan, uh, to, uh, be more competitive in this area, our own market study as we would, to, uh, be competitive, and we use Culpeper as a benchmark. Well, Culpeper's moving as we move, so, uh, we know that's a moving target, but it's an important one for us. And we also want to, um, work on, uh, how do we have replacement cycles in so that we're more efficient and effective, being as I ask people to be more proactive than reactive? Because, um, reaction sometimes end up costing you more than being, uh, proactive in the work. Each year that I work with board to do a budget, uh, we build it on assumptions. So, these are the assumptions we have now, and when you build a budget and build a budget assumptions, you understand at any time, those assumptions can change. And we have to be fluid as we're making, um, uh, budget projections, because as we all know, a budget is, um, a projection of your needs. And the, these assumptions may change. So, uh, we'll talk about the enrollment over multiple years, but for next year, we're projecting an enrollment of four thousand eight hundred and thirty students. In the school system, you have to talk about actual enrollment, and that's called unadjusted. But then when we budget, we have to talk about adjusted enrollment. So, last year, if you recall, we talked to you about making an adjustment in order to take advantage of a regional program that actually brought more resources to us. Because by being in a regional program for special education students, we had to move those students out of our average daily membership. We still taught them, they still ti- were here, but because we combined in a regional program, we were able to get a greater reimbursement than we would have if we just had their attendance and ours. So, that's a benefit. So, you'll see the, uh, if the first number is if anybody says, how many kids do you think are going to be in Orange County next year? It's safe to say, we believe at this point that we would have four thousand eight hundred and thirty based upon our long-term projections. Now, that's only K twelve, because when we're talking about, uh, funding, remember the state funding is gonna talk about K twelve, not pre-K twelve. Um, and I'll give you some numbers on that, so you can, um, know, uh, those figures, because, um, that's important. When people say, how many s- kids are you serving? We're actually serving a lot of preschoolers. Um, so our adjusted, once we take out for that prep, that's the Piedmont Regional Educational Program, that's that special education program. Other nine counties that participate in that, you'll see that we have an adjustment downward. Um, another is, an assumption is, we will continue to work on the board's adopted, they had a five-year plan. Last year, we made it a six-year plan, and as we move forward, we believe now we've pulled it out to an eight-year plan. But we are com- uh, the board is committed to, um, making adjustments in the salary structure in order to be competitive in the region. So, what we talk about now will be really stretching a five-year plan out to eight years. We're projecting health insurance costs, as you are, to seven point three percent, um, increase. We're pleased that in the last few weeks, that's come down, uh, from a nine point two, so we're, uh, continue to monitor that. We are facing a, uh, increased contribution in the Virginia retirement system, and you'll see that percentage, it's going up again next year. Uh, but this is what is in the governor's budget for this year. We're looking at a slight decline in our federal funding. That's something that fluctuates on a daily basis. Um, as, as we look at federal funding sources, not really daily, but it feels like that sometimes. Uh, and we'll continue to monitor that, because that's very program-specific. Um, and then, uh, I have an assumption in here, and you might say, uh, Brenda, really, how long have you been at this? If you wanna, uh, believe in this assumption, my assumption is in this budget that there would be no new initiatives coming out of Richmond that would add. So, I know, silly, but, uh, at least I'm assuming it at this point, because as we go through, I'll tell you some of the incentives that are in there already. We could face some more, but the, I did not build extra dollars in the budget, um, thinking that that might occur. And then an assumption would be to balance the budget, that we would, as you will see, um, need additional support from you. The priorities, um, as, um, was mentioned, our high priority is on our, uh, employees. If you, um, came to see us, you'd see over seven hundred employees, uh, well over three hundred, about four hundred are the, uh, certificated employees that, uh, that have to have, uh, special endorsements and licensures and all of that. So, we, we have a large workforce. We, I tell people, they often think of school systems as a separate entity, but we're really a large business in, in this, uh, community. Uh, we have a large employee base, uh, we bring people to the area, and we know that to br- we, it's not enough to bring them here, we need to keep them here. And I'll give you some charts that'll show how we stand, um, uh, if you look in the region, uh, with our neighbors. High-quality healthcare and retirement benefits have been over that. Um, we have to, at a minimum, meet all state and federal requirements, and that's at a minimum. I've, I've told people with whom I've worked for years, you don't wanna be in a system that's a, I call a SOQ county, because the standards of quality that are, um, issued by the state, they're the minimum. They say that is the minimum. And I, I've not been in a community that really wanted to accept that as, as the, as the requirement. So, we'll look at our replacement cycles. We're looking also to build in some replacement cycles in our maintenance and, uh, facilities, equipment, and also in our school furniture. If you're building a new school and working toward that, as has happened over X number of years in Orange, you can be satisfied with the furniture and equipment. But if you're not going in a cycle anymore, you need to be prepared to say, I'm going to have to replace sets of desk, chairs, all of that, cafeteria tables, and we want to start building that replacement cycle in. We also, last year, talked to you about the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School. That is, uh, for some students in a regional program. It's a very advanced program. Many, many years ago, Orange went out, there were, I was part of the region at that time, and Orange was the first, uh, school system in that region to ask for additional slots. And I remember the superintendent sat at the table that day, I know where we were, we were at a meeting in Nelson County, in some little elementary school, and the superintendent at that time said, we have more kids in Orange County that could be in this program. What can we do to get in more students? And so, Orange had eighteen slots and over the years has added eighteen more. So, we, next year's ninth grade class, uh, in order to continue that cohort group going through, would need eighteen more slots. We also are looking at expanding our career and technical programs, and we've visited, um, some people have visited, uh, the Charlottesville Albemarle Center and have realized that if we can't offer programs that our students need right now and can't afford to build in additional programs at the time, they will actually take some students there for specialized programs that we don't offer, and we would just pay their tuition. And then I added Germana, because we just signed a letter, um, stating that we would, um, be interested in applying for a, it's a grant. We don't know, it's a competitive grant, but it would help some of our students, uh, go into an early college program. We don't know that we'll receive it. But if we do, it's targeting students who would qualify for Pell Grants. And, um, so we want to support them. And then, uh, technology. Now, you hear a lot of divisions talk about one-to-one, we're not talking about that, we're just talking about increasing access. And so, those are our priorities. Just to review, in your packet, you'll have more information in your booklet about the salaries and, and HR component of this. But the board had looked at a five-year plan, and initially at the beginning of this budget session, uh, we were asked, well, what would it take to get us back on schedule for a five-year plan? And after looking at tha- at that, you could see that they realized it would be a, uh, a five point seven percent on average increase for employees. And when they saw that amount, they said, can't do that, come back. Give us several options. So, we, uh, backed off to a, a five-year plan, to a six-year plan, to a seven-year plan, and we resulted in this is, is taking that plan out for eight years. Um, and would average as a two point five, uh, percent step increase. Um, we're also looking at compacting the teacher scale, but the, the main would be a two point five for all employees, and you can see the costs associated there. Now, a year ago, you may have remembered that the governor had an incentive to, um, and we were able to pick up about two hundred and I think twenty-seven thousand dollars as an incentive to, uh, give a two percent salary on average to the stu- uh, to the, uh, employees that were under that standards of quality. Uh, we, we lose that money this year, that incentive went away. Um, the governor's budget has an incentive such as that back in next year. Not FY seventeen, but the governor's budget does have an incentive in for FY eighteen for a two percent again. So, we've gone from having it last year, losing it this year, looking forward to it, and, and another year. So, um, um, I just thought we'd go through some of the trends. I won't spend a long time, but if you ever want me to stop on any of these, please, um, stop me. Uh, of course, uh, we, we, we love this picture of some of our students, especially the young man in the orange shirt, um, as he's surrounded by math facts, um, and, uh, uh, remembering division is the inverse of multiplication. So, uh, we feel that way some days as we're working on the budget. So, this is just a state trend that you all know about, and that's what you're seeing as the state is declining the support, not increasing the support for education. You're seeing a significant i- uh, decrease since two thousand nine. It's not, that's nothing new. But at the same time, the state is not taking away any of our requirements. They're increasing the rigor of the, uh, standards. They're actually taking, uh, raising the bar on the tests that they create, and then they're taking some of the test off and saying, you don't have to give those tests, but by the way, you have to create your own. And when they took those tests away at the state level, they didn't say, oh, and by the way, we're gonna save this amount of money, so we'll give it to you. So, we actually have to increase, we have to develop the tests now in certain grade levels and, uh, have the, um, professional development and the work associated with that. And then during the same time, we're seeing an increase in Orange in our, in some of our, the diversity in our population. We just had a report the other night, we've seen a significant increase in our students with special needs, and we also have a significant increase in our students that speak English as a second language. So, those changes are coming in, they require special services. We know that we, um, it's our job to provide them, but at the same time, we're losing state dollars. This gives you a picture of our enrollment trends, even though it looks rather steep, uh, when you first glance at this. We did put in the bars, as you see the decline, you could see a year to year. Um, it's something that is concerning for us. It's not shocking, it is concerning. And we're finding out that in, uh, conversations across the Commonwealth, it's a trend that people are saying they're seeing in rural communities. Um, I don't know, uh, how many communities have been impacted by that, but it is something that's constantly brought up in the educational circles, uh, when we're discussing this. So, when you look at this number, if you would think, uh, in terms of actual physical bodies of kids, we have, uh, two hundred and twenty-seven more students than you would see here, because that's a preschool. Um, and, um, we have a, we have, if you remember, a four-year program that we get some funding from the state on. We partner with, uh, a federal program, Head Start, and that's how you get the two hundred and twenty-seven in that age group in pre-K. But we also serve students, um, through di- uh, childcare and other areas that are much younger than that. Um, but some people, uh, wonder why those numbers aren't in those figures, and that's because, um, we, the funding, uh, for Virginia, except for the pre-K initiative, is for K twelve. Last year at this table, somebody asked, are we serving all of the kids that need to be in four-year-old programs in Orange? And again, we can say, sadly, we're not. Uh, we have twenty-one right now that are on, um, a waiting list to get in. Um, the state actually provides us, um, funding, partial funding, only partial, for seventy slots. We're using fifty-five of the seventy right now, because we're, we were encouraged to put fifteen more in for next year, but that requires another forty thousand dollars from the locality, and we felt like this was not the year. Uh, to build that in, even though we need, have a need, and even though we're really excited, because we were just notified this week that we do have a grant coming to us to at least bring a few of those, uh, children in this year for the remainder of the year. So, that's better than, uh, not being able to do that. When you look, we put the next slide, uh, to this is, is, I know for years, you've probably seen the slide about how lottery, if you, uh, this slide's really interesting to me, because I'm old enough to remember when, you know, lottery started. And if you look over to the far left and you see in two thousand seven, you see the colors and the bars there. And if you look down to the bottom, you can see what those colors mean. And they mean things like non-recurring costs and capital needs and all of that, and then you see those colors disappear. And that's because we're, uh, actually supplanting what used to be in the general fund of the state budget for education is being shifted into lottery. This year, um, one that has be- uh, something that's being put in lottery that's significant for us is, I'll walk you down this path. As our enrollment increases and your composite index increases slightly, just slightly, we're looking at a loss of over six hundred thousand dollars in general basic aid. Then you think, well, she just said that last year you had an incentive for salaries that was over two hundred thousand dollars, and we're not getting that for FY seventeen. So, you quickly add up and you're already over the variance of over eight hundred thousand dollars. Well, in the governor's budget, there, um, are funds in the lottery called no-loss funds. So, right now, the no-loss funds for our budget are eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And it was built in, and when you're in Richmond and you hear them speak, it will be to help offset, uh, the loss, especially in the localities that have declining enrollment. So, that is in lottery to offset the loss in the general funds. Um, it's not there next year. So, just as we, I'm looking, you know, as you do when you budget, you look really for a two-year, um, cycle. So, um, one of the things that our board looks at, I'll just go through these, is we look at expenditure trends. We constantly are saying, how are we doing compared to the state average, and we know the blue line is the state average. This is only been up, this is, goes up to two thousand, uh, fourteen, and then with our amount, we don't have the state for two thousand fifteen. But you can see that, um, I won't spend a lot of time on that, but, um, I think, uh, in Orange, you are getting your money's worth. And you can say that, uh, this is the per pupil spending, um, is in two thousand fourteen, we're a hundred and fifteen out of a hundred and thirty-two. You can see that has improved, and you should be proud of that improvement, because at one point, um, it was, um, very, it's at the bottom, I believe, a hundred and thirty-two out of a hundred and thirty-two. So, thank you for your support, as that has improved. But I will say to you, you're getting your money's worth when you can say all your schools are fully accredited, um, and look at a, a chart like this. Um, the next, we just tried to do a comparison with some of the ones in the area. Um, so, uh, thanks to Alex and others, orange is orange and green is green. That's a new thing we say, so. thanks to Alex and others, orange is orange and green is green. That's a new thing we say. So when I look at this chart because we had different colors. So we could see orange, you could see green and you could see culled pepper. And we're, uh, really, uh, closely aligned now when you look at the trends in the local support for schools. Um, we wanted to break that out further in our discussions. And you'll see on the next slide that we were showing, um, the, uh, required local effort and pointing out that we, we, we very well know you go above and beyond the minimum. You're at about a sixty percent exceeding that, we appreciate that. We wanted to also though, look at some of their, our neighbors. Uh, we hear about some of the things they're doing, we look at their salaries and we wanted to see some comparisons. So on the bar, you'll see as of two thousand fourteen, what their composite index was. And then, um, you'll see how much they exceed their required local effort. Um, and you, as you know, our composite index did change. This one was from two thousand fourteen and, you know, now ours is at a, a point three eight one one, uh, for, um, the next period. Something we did, we, we wanted to look at our, uh, we look at our salary scales and in your book, um, you'll see in this section on salary scales, uh, you'll see the salaries, you'll see, uh, quite a few items here, starting on page fourteen. You'll see how we compare to other, uh, divisions. Um, if you see red, uh, that means they're above us. If you see white, that means, um, we are, um, above them at that. So you can, at a glance, uh, look across and see where we are stronger, who we're stronger in terms of comparison. Um, that information is there, but we particularly wanted to just pick a step nine and look and see, uh, what would that be? Because one thing you don't want in a community is to continue, is to say the overwhelming majority of the teachers are zero to four. They're wonderful, they're great, we're glad to have them here, but there is something to be said for experience in terms of building that. Um, the next, uh, in your, uh, on the slide for you is also, we wanted to look at our trends. How are we trending with our teachers? And on the slide, you'll see that, uh, you know, your three, our three top bars, you see the twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty percent that then breaks, uh, in terms of years' experience from zero to four up to ten to fourteen. But what we also do, and the board has also done, is they want to be very mindful of those last three bars. Because those last three bars, if you look at the percentages, that's eighteen percent of the teachers are at that, on that bubble of, I can retire, or I can soon retire. So that ha- that's important for us to consider because when, when they leave, we wanna make sure we recruit the very, very best to replace them. And in any community where I've ever worked, some of those people on those, if you add those up and get that, uh, twenty-nine, twenty-six and twelve added up, are some people that you would know right away that are so respected, have been in the community, believe in the community and have spent so many years of their lives giving back to the community by teaching. So you know that when you lose them, it's a, it's a big, big hole in the system. So we look at that in terms of our recruitment. So our priority needs. Uh, break these out for you, um, in terms of cost. Um, the salary improvement plan with the two point five percent increase, that would be for all employees and that would include the FICA um, and, and the, uh, associated other benefits with that, the cost. If we, uh, were just to look at our employees, that's where they stand right now in order with their entire employee base, it's going to cost us almost two hundred thousand dollars for the, for VRS. Seven point three percent increase in health insurance, you see the associated cost there. The next one I wanted to point out to you, this is in the governor's budget. We don't know if it's going to stay in the governor's budget. We don't know what is going to happen with this. So it's one we're watching, it's there. The governor has in his budget for every elementary school in the Commonwealth to get an additional instructional position for next year. So that's, I think I can hear him say, two thousand five hundred new positions. Uh, the year after, the second year of the biennial budget, it's for every middle and high school to get two positions per school. So when you look at that, we have put that in our budget, but we know that that comes at a certain cost. So the total cost is three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars on, as an average of what it would cost to employ six new teaching positions. The state is giving us two hundred and thirty thousand. So we do know that they're going to run the formula that they use. They select an average teacher salary that they have in Richmond and they run your composite index on it. And that's how they calculate how much we get. So we know to get the positions, we have to invest and it's a discussion that we're having. Um, and that's one we're really watching at the state. So we do know that if we look at our bottom line figure for the state dollars and the board has, has known this and has worked through this in their budget, that if we decide not to participate in that, two things happen. Our, uh, priority needs costs go down, but also our revenue goes down because we have to take out the two hundred and thirty thousand dollars that's showing up as state revenue now if we don't use it because it's an incentive program. Um, and from the state level, they're hoping in the budget development that that stays as an incentive uh, and doesn't just disappear after two years. But we're watching that as, as, as divisions across the Commonwealth are and a lot of the dis- divisions, especially with declining enrollment, are having conversations about this. We're going to be required by population to add a special education teacher, not an option. Um, and it, as of now, it looks like the population's going to be at Prospect Heights Middle School and we're looking at being able to do that through state funds. So that would be no additional cost to the locality. Uh, the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School I mentioned with K-Tech and GCC at a minimum, the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School to continue that program for the ninth graders so that we have the same number at each is, um, thirteen thousand. Um, I think thirteen thousand, let me get this right, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. So if we took that out, um, that, that is the top priority in that, although we would like to expand the programs. The three Chromebook labs, I won't even tell you how many, uh, we cut off of that, uh, needs. Um, that's, um, averages about thir- that's thirty, uh, Chromebook labs, so it gives us three. And we would decide on priority is where they would go based upon the curriculum and the grade levels. Additional bus replacement, we are running, uh, the governor, if you rem- or the, uh, Virginia Department of Education, the government, everybody, many years ago, used to have a twelve-year replacement cycle, now they're running on a fifteen-year replacement cycle. Uh, we're averaging three hundred thousand miles on a bus in fifteen years. That's way above what they anticipated when they put that plan in place, uh, because our routes are longer. They are, um, that's the lifetime of our bus if we run one for fifteen years. And we're finding now that some just aren't making it fifteen years. So we, in order to keep our cycle, we have a five, uh, bus a year replacement cycle. But in order to keep up, we feel like we have to add an additional bus next year. And those are coming now at about a hundred thousand dollars a bus. Um, transportation, we're looking at building in a replacement cycle for vehicles. Uh, we're following, um, guidelines that have been established by the Virginia Department of General Services. And they really look at three components, they look at mileage, the age and overall condition. And we are developing a replacement cycle because we currently have not had that. And that would include, um, vehicles that we have that are used in our fleet. Um, and then the increased fuel cost, uh, some people are saying, whoa, wait a minute, prices are down here, costs going up. The routes, we're, we're running, we've run, increased our number of routes and also some special routes for some special needs. So as the route, the mileage has increased, the costs are going up. Um, and then repairs, because if you're running buses for fifteen years, your repair cost is gonna go up. I mean, it used to be a twelve-year cycle, we used to think that was a lot. And now when you're pushing buses that are going at three hundred thousand miles over a fifteen-year period, you can just anticipate that the repair costs are going up. Um, and then equipment replacement, we're building in a cycle for replacement for custodial and maintenance. Um, that would be the, we have the tractors, plows, the mowers. Uh, and internally, we have the buffers because we maintain the nine schools plus our buildings, so ten large facilities. And what we want to do is have a, a cycle in there so we don't wait till something breaks down and then we go out and buy something. We get a replacement cycle and that was a goal that we had there. Furniture I mentioned, um, desks are going for about, uh, I think it's a hundred dollars a desk and fifty dollars a chair now to. And, uh, we're looking at, uh, beginning to, uh, and a thousand dollars for cafeteria tables. So we're looking at, uh, how do we build in a cycle of replacement so we don't come one year and go, we need lots of these. If we build in and just gradually replace as they're needed, um, that would be very important for us to do. So that's the work we've been doing. So we, we summarize this, we look at this in terms of our state, um, uh, change in revenue. Um, uh, the other category, that's some of the prep funds and some of the funds that we're running back through. We have to take them out of general and put them back in. And then, um, the county we see, so overall, we know that a bottom line for us to balance the budget with these priority needs, uh, we would be requesting from you an additional support of one million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, um, six hundred and thirty-four, um, dollars to balance this budget. Um, I'm not saying that these are self-portraits, but, um, just saying, um, these are, these are students of ours at Unionville and I couldn't resist these pictures because, um, I don't know if it's for Alex, wears glasses and my eyes some days, you know, the rings just get a little bigger. So I thought I would highlight this wonderful art of our Unionville students. But I just wanted to summarize because we do manage several other funds. Um, and, uh, we know your primary concern is with the operating fund because that's where your support is needed. But we do manage our childcare fund, we have another fund, and those are all broken out in your booklet for you. Um, we have the food services program, our textbook funds, that's a flow-through, uh, fund that we have. We have our Head Start fund, we have a regional adult education fund that we're the fiscal agent for a regional program. And then, uh, we wanted to put that all together so you could see a total, um, fund, uh, in terms of a, uh, summary for our total budget. Um, and then, uh, we get an all-fund summary for you that breaks it down. Um, and then this is a, a, a favorite of mine. We move this po- po- graph around a lot in terms of where should we put it? But I always like to help people in the community understand the funding sources for schools. Because they hear a lot about the federal guidelines and the requirements and title this and, and, you know, title that and what do we do? And when you look at it, you realize that it really is a partnership between the state and the locality. And over the years, as you've seen the state decline, you've seen the locality responsibility go up. Because not just for schools, we know for other, uh, groups that you support. And we are aware of that, we recognize that because it's only a small amount that comes from other and it's only, and it's a very small amount that comes from federal in the scheme of things. So, um, that is there. I'll be happy, or the board will be happy to take any questions you have clarified. If you, your booklet, just to let you know, has the presentation. Um, and then what I so, we provided for you under the rationale is, um, uh, very, um, descriptive information of the things that I reviewed tonight, um, so that you'll have that for your reference. Um, and as you go through, you'll know the, I, I tried to make note of the ones that we are getting some state funding for and those are particular, those teaching positions, should we take those? Uh, we get money for remedial, uh, summer school, we're gonna fund the special ed teacher from state money. And, um, we get, uh, categorical money for special programs, but we know we're asking, uh, the locality for a great deal of support in this effort. Uh, the next one is just their comparisons. Um, so you have that information for you. And then we did go ahead and put in what, uh, on page sixteen, that was the original five-year plan. So you can see when the board first adopted that plan, that's what it looked like. Um, and then the next page on page seventeen is what we pulled out now to an eight-year plan. Um, so that you can see that. Gave you some enrollment information and also included information about our preschool uh, for you because we thought you might like to, um, see that as people are talking about the different groups you serve, understanding that it's a lot more enrolled than, um, than you might see, some of your projections out. And then just some supplemental information we think would be helpful from you, um, helpful for you that comes from our, the state. And then the summary of all the, um, funds that we do manage. So I really appreciate your time and, and, and your attentiveness to this and, um, it means a great deal to have the opportunity to come and talk about education and let you know the work we're doing and, uh, thank you for your, um, uh, support. We really appreciate it. So I turn it back to my board and then back to your board, Mr. David.
Just a couple of real quick questions, Doctor. Um, with a one point seven five percent reduction in enrollment, other than the state being the idiots that they are, how do they justify requiring additional positions when you're losing a total of seventy students?
Right. And they, and that's a conversation that's been held, they don't actually require, it's an incentive program. So they've had a lot of conversation at the state, I'm sure in your organization, you've heard people ask for flexibility. Please give us some flexibility, you know, this, that and the other. So one of the reasons behind this, you will hear, um, in Richmond, is that they wanted to do some extra funding to the school systems and say, it's for instruction. But we're not gonna tell you it has to be a this kind of teacher or that kind of teacher or that. And it's an incentive. You take it or you don't. And so we're not required to, but that is a conversation that people that are having declining enrollment are having in Richmond to say, it's great that we have this money to support additional staff, but we're declining. Is there something, is there a po- you know, some way we could use that same kind of funding to support us in maintaining the staff that we have?
And then the, the reduced enrollment, do you have a idea of the grade levels on that?
We're seeing, we're seeing, uh, it's really interesting, we're looking at it and we, we monitor it on a regular basis. Of course, kindergarten, which I mentioned before, we had, um, a smaller kindergarten class than, the trends have been here for years. And if someone sent us out information, we finally, um, looked at that that the demographic was then and said, oh, that has something to do with that recession. Because this would have been the year, we would have, these would, you could call them the recession babies, but they're, they didn't appear. So we understand that. But when you look at it, um, it's, we did a breakdown of a couple of grade levels and people are coming out and moving in. So even though you have a net loss, you may have gained, you know, quite a few. So it's, it's really interesting for us. We're not seeing a particular grade level and enough to impact in our initial analysis. That means a reduction because it's spread out all over. And, uh, but that's something we'll watch because if we should have a shift in a particular grade level in a particular school, we know that that would make us change.
Only other one is, you said this is a two and a half percent across the board.
Excuse me?
Two and a half percent increase across the board.
For the?
Personnel.
Yes.
And does that include all personnel?
All full-time.
Instructional, all full-time and personnel. Okay. Not part-time, but all full-time? Okay. Just so you don't and we don't get.
And that is on average because, and we know as you look at scales, it, because somebody can get a two point four and somebody else does something that,
No, absolutely.
But yes, and that was one thing the board was very clear about in the development of this, that even though we had conversation and had done some of that market work around teachers, we wanted to say, at what point do you set that? But then that applies to all employees.
All full-time?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we know the, um, required level of effort for fifteen, FY fifteen yet? Is that in here somewhere? I see you have, you have a table, uh, under the last tab, supplemental information.
Right, we had, um, it's not something that we can get from, um, the state. But I did just see something today that came out and it's, it's actually was sent out today by the, uh, Virginia Education Association. It came in late this afternoon and they had an update. So, um, we, uh, at a quick glance, I don't, uh, don't quote me on it. But I, I know we saw movement, Alex looked at it, we went from, um, a standing of about, but it came in late today. It was, uh, in the area you're showing have like a sixty percent above. It's gone up to, I wanna say sixty-two, sixty-three, so, so there's some upward movement in the percentage. We, uh, we, I glanced at it to see how we stood and then looked at a couple of other, other communities around us to see. They made up, they went up or down. But, um, that, that has, is something we can't yet. Um, I just re- just received it today.
Okay, the rea- the reason for the question, I, I always like to look at the, uh, the amount of required, uh,
the amount of required, uh, level of effort out of the, if I look at the FY fifteen number that you gave us on, on page ten for local funds, uh, the twenty million dollars, over half of that is required. And so we're really dealing with decision about half of that, another, about ten, ten million dollar decision as opposed to a twenty million dollar decision. I think that's an, it's an important distinction that we all have to be aware of. And so i- i- if you have that number, if it's available, I'd, I'd like to, uh, know what it is for the, uh, twenty fifteen period, if it's available yet.
We will, we'll look and see that, I wanna, uh, I'll give it source too because I haven't seen it from the state, but I did see from another source.
Yeah, I mean, it was almost eleven million in fourteen, so...
Oh, if you mean just your basic required amount, yes, we can get you that, absolutely. I was thinking you were just meaning standing. Mm-hmm, yes.
Uh, well, I couldn't tell if that was the, uh... My five and six, we'll stick together.
Yeah, right, page six, uh, page six is... Yeah, this shows from, um, two thousand fourteen, but I, I understand your question. Just if I look at the budget for, um, this past year, um, and you're not talking percentage and standing, you're just talking about actual dollars.
No, if, if you look on page twenty-five of the last tab, the orange number there that's highlighted is...
Yes.
Ten point eight nine, ten point eight nine, three, eight nine oh three seven five.
Yes, yes.
I just, that's the fourteen number, I was just, the, the new number if we have it, that's all.
Yes, we can get you that, absolutely.
The health insurance premium number, the seven point three percent, is that, what, what's the status of that number? Is that something that we're seeing and, and essentially sharing between the county and the schools? Is, is that a, is that a bid that we have, or what, what is, where's, where'd that number come from? I just wanna know.
That's the latest estimate that we have from our, um, our consultant.
From our, it's, okay, that's...
Fairly recent, I'd say, what, Alex, two weeks?
Yeah, okay.
And a half.
Yeah, if I under...
We could go Friday.
And if I understand, we're not seeing as much movement in this, these estimates as we did last year. It's that, last year we were like at seventeen, and then we worked it down, worked it down. This is, we are, our experience rate has leveled off and is more in line with our pool. So I, I think seven point three is a pretty stable number, we're not in a volatile situation as we...
Well, that's what I, I, is that a, a number that we're fairly confident is gonna be the number?
You know, it's the number that we both want then for, for our budget deliberations. Certainly we'll be getting updates, um, until, yeah, June.
Yeah, I was in April, May, June, set the rate and things.
Didn't the conversation start at nine, uh, over nine when we started?
It did, it was nine point two when we started.
And last year we started at seventeen, so, uh...
We were happy with that.
And so I, I think one of the things we're seeing is the pool is stabilizing. We changed, uh, some of the plan requirements, co-pays and, 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 and plan offerings and things last year. I certainly have had conversations with Doctor Tanner and Glenda and, and Alex. I don't think that has stopped, uh, uh, meaning that we're going to have to continue to look at our plan offerings and how we can maximize, um, our efficiency. So I, I, what, what we did last year, I, I certainly wanna make, communicate at least is something from, from my, my perspective, is that we have to continue to look at our offerings, make them competitive, but also affordable for the employee and for the employer. And so it's, this is gonna be a balancing act. But it's still, at the end of the day, I think having a self-insurance pool is, is, is insulating us from a lot of volatility that I'm aware of of other similarly situated localities. They're looking at ten, fifteen, some of those are up to twenty-plus percent increases.
Yeah, I read about some, some twenty-plus numbers, that's one of the reasons I asked the question, so...
So we're in a good spot, it's just how do we maintain that?
And I do thank goodness for technology, got a finance person sitting back there with the technology.
Do you have a number for me?
I, well, I have a number for you that would be, uh, if, if we use the gu- on the governor's budget with our numbers for FY seventeen, the required local effort is twelve million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight, minimum. And that's running with our, the numbers we ran, we ran our, if we're wrong, we adjust this to the moment.
So still, it's running a little more than half still, it's a twelve-three of the twenty-two.
Yes.
Well... We just, we've only had this now. Yeah, that's...
You know where to find me and all of these folks if you have questions.
I don't know if you can see this map, but I wanted to show it to you. The blue are counties since the two thousand and ten census that have lost population. The yellow, which is, which includes us, have had, have basically stayed flat. The population change has all been in the orange and dark orange. There's no surprise, that's a, probably a fifteen-year trend. But, uh, I made the comment earlier that, you know, this correlates highly with the loss of population. And I'll tell you, just for those who might be interested, the year-to-year-over-year change, two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and fifteen, we actually lost almost a percent and a half of our population.
So on that positive note, once again...
Some will... Some have heard me say that twice tonight, so... But let's, you, you know, th- these are the facts that we're, that we're living with.
Just as grim the second time.
It didn't, it wasn't even, I'm gonna practice.
He's got this canned twenty-five second speech.
That's right. And I'm gonna say it again.
Yep. All right, well, I don't think we have anything else there.
Not, not yet.
So moved.
Well, two just...
Okay, I was gonna ask just before you guys close, if my board has anything they would like to say.
I'd just like to point out two things. We do have a, a drop in our students, and the number looks like it's, uh, something. But if you think about it, we had nine schools, and if it was over or equal on all of them, that's eleven students per school. Schools have three and four hundred students in it, losing eleven students, yes, it's a change. But it's not a change that's gonna really change our business. And those incentive teachers, I mean, the state's trying to cut down the student-teacher ratio in the elementary school, that's what it's for. The last one is, and this is what I always get asked by my constituents, they think the lottery is paying for the school system. Well, I just wanna go on again. The lottery system is three percent of our budget, so I just like to always put that...
The lottery system is, is a supplement to what they robbed of the general fund to pay the schools.
Yeah, what's supposed to be.
Yes, well, it started, I, that's, this is another subject, but it started out to be, these were gonna additional funds that were gonna be given to the schools to pay they want this, to spend the way they wanted to spend them. Then in the downturn in the economy, they said, well, we're gonna take this part away from you over here because you've got...
It's a replacement for the general fund.
Yes, that was the plan.
Do you have anything you want to add?
No, the one thing I was gonna say, and I ran into this gym at Food Lion the other day, and he was saying, see, you're not gonna ask for any more of your money, and I laughed. But you see, the problems that we have, uh, the numbers that are going up are really the same problem you have. You know, the big amount of money with the health insurance and the VRS, and, um, trying to stay on track with your employees, it's the same problems that you all have. There really isn't anything that new that's in here, you know, but thank you for your time.
It was, it's a solid budget, it was well presented, and I just wanna say thank you for your time.
And I just, again, say thank you for the time and allow us to present it to you with your consideration. Now go outside and get some money off that tree.
What tree?
I know she's already taken it off.
I know you have a tree back there, yeah.
We can't understand...
We shook that thing already.
You're shaking a little more, too.
Sharon, what were you saying? You were a little slurred.
Mr. Chairman...
That's just me, man.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board and school board, um, I just wanna kinda give us an idea of procedurally what happens from here. Doctor Tanner and Alex and Glenda and I have already met once, we've already communicated quite a bit, and we'll continue to communicate. Two weeks from tonight is when I'll be presenting my proposed budget. And, you know, I, I don't wanna say things are good or things are bad, things are challenging, you know? And, and, and Doctor Tanner and Alex certainly are, are very aware of what we're having to deal with on, on our revenue side, uh, flat revenues. And so I, I, I don't, you know, I just wanna levels, manage some expectations here. We're gonna work as hard as you can, certainly the board, and everybody's working for the common cause because public education is absolutely one of our, our, our leading services, I mean, is what we're about. So we'll work hard, but, uh, two weeks from tonight, then I'll present it for Sosposit, and then, uh, five board members, then we'll work it through, uh, from, from, everything. From a time-wise, we're still very much on track, um, to, to have this ready for public hearing and adoption and, and, as we've, as we, uh, guess, scheduled it, so...
Well, and like I said in, in my opening remarks is that, um, you know, we will continue to work with you guys and support you in any way that we can and, um, and whichever endeavors that takes or whatever we have to do to support you guys ultimately. We wanna succeed, we wanna raise children, we wanna be able to give them that foundation to grow, hopefully stay here, give back to the community, and, um, and learn. And so, like I said, we're not gonna kick the can down the road with you guys, we're all gonna pick it up and carry it.
It just gets heavy sometimes.
That's right.
And most of the time it's light because there's no money. All right, we have a motion.